Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winchester Select Board meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2023. I'll open the meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening are my colleagues, Vice Chair Anthea Brady, members John Fallon, Michelle B- Michelle Berkshire, Michelle Berkshire with the audience tonight. I will note that she's here and present, and Michael Betancourt, and as always, Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We are going to start. I know we have a lot of people in the audience. We're going to try to move things around to get people out, so you're not here all night like us. So we're going to start with the Board of Appeals. We have two alternate positions open. We have three applicants for positions that for one alternate position to expire March 31st, 2024, and another alternate position to expire on March 31st, 2025. The three candidates that we have, Harut, Bill McGonigal, and John Stevens, have all been interviewed by us in the past several, well, several weeks. I don't know, Michelle, if you were part of the John Stevens interview at that time.
I was not.
I did ask all the candidates that they had the right to be present if they wanted. I'm not sure. I didn't know if the Board wanted to re-interview people, or just if they wanted to ask any questions or anything like that. So I gave them the option to be here or not. I don't know. I see, I think John's back there, and Harut's here. I don't see Bill. So happy to call them up. If anyone has any questions, if you feel comfortable, like you've got a lot of the information, you can, for Michelle's benefit, certainly could bring up John Stevens again if you'd like that.
I would like that. Thank you.
Hi, John.
It's mainly for me, John, so thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for being willing to serve on the board.
Since I don't have the benefit of all of your resume and other materials, if you could in a nutshell, your experience either with zoning, or land use, or building, or whatever it is that makes you qualified.
The qualifications in general are simply that I've practiced law for, well, as of October 5th, it will have been 50 years that I've been admitted to practice somewhere. I, my background in real estate recently, there really isn't much in the way, except that when the Fels Project was proposed and approved by the Planning Board, I took on the representation of the plaintiffs in that case. They were immediately adjacent 51 Vine Street. That case is over and done now, and whatever happens next, happens next. I got nothing to say about it. So that's the, I did real estate, but that was a blast 45 years ago other than this case.
Have you served in other boards or committees here in town?
Yes, T-TAC, Transportation and Traffic Advisory Committee, and, well, if you show up at Wedgemia Station between 7:45 and 8:30 in the morning, I'll be there.
Crossing Guard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know that I have any more questions.
All right.
Other questions for John while he's up here?
All right.
I know. Not too hard. Thank you.
Any, I mean, I see Harut in the back. Anyone have any questions for Harut? All right. No? Are we ready to discuss these positions? So like I said, we've got two alternate positions open. If we want to fill them, there are three candidates. March 24th, I'm sorry, March 20, 31st, 2024, one expires, and then March 31st, 2025, one expires. So we have got one, one-year position and one two-year position. He did, yeah.
But he applied to be an alternate?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill? You good? All right. So yes, that's true. So I can tell you, I guess, an unusual move, I'll start. So where my head is at, you know, I would fill one position, and I would put Harut as an alternate. You know, I've got concerns. You know, I think John's volunteered in other aspects of the town and served the town well in those aspects. I'm not sure the ZBA is the right fit for John. And Bill McGonigal, like you said, John, he was here the last time, indicated he did not want to be an alternate, but did apply. I just have concerns about having him on the ZBA, just from what I saw at the last hearing, and then other concerns that, you know, I've witnessed. That's just me personally. So I would, I would support Harut for an alternate position and leave the other two vacant at this time. That would give them two alternates and their three mem- full-time members as well, which is what they typically operate at.
So you're suggesting only filling one spot?
Yes. I mean, one spot's only open for a year anyways.
Yep.
So I would, I would offer the two-year position to Harut.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
You know, I'm concerned that we keep leaving a spot open here if we have any turnover. There's already, from messages we've received about this, these two open positions, there already seems to be challenges with having a quorum on the ZBA and being able to hold hearings and not delay things further, which, you know, is an issue if we're delaying projects or for people who are looking to do work on their homes. So I think it's, it's risky for us to keep leaving a position open and having turnover here, and I would hesitate to only appoint and fill one role at this point. I think we should, I think we should fill both seats.
I'm aware. I mean, they've got one alternate right now. They've got three members, and then they've, this would be a second. So they need three to sit. So they have five people to rotate from, and they typically pick dates like we do.
I think there's...
By the, sorry. And just in the nature of the business, in the burnout rate at the ZBA level, they typically are always al-, you know, it's, it's, I mean, Mike, you may know best, being the longest-term member here, but they typically operate at five, you know. Sometimes they have six, but it's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's worthwhile to have a, you know, a, a deep bench, but, you know, sometimes with the alternates, if they're not, if they're not engaged in, you know, the, the hearings, then they, you know, can lose interest as well. So it's...
Heard it the last year, was that they felt that they didn't have a role?
Yeah, I mean, I think that they've, they've tried to kind of correct that a little bit, but yeah, I think that's kind of the, the nature of the beast. But it's, it's helpful to, you know, have alternates come in and, you know, learn the process because it is, is a changing one. So it'll, it'll be good to at least fill, fill one seat here.
I think what we learned at the last hearing, or the last appointments, is that there's some risk in the, there's some conflicts in the current members of the board, that if we're limiting the number of people who are on the ZBA, then it's more likely that there's going to be risk of not having a quorum and delaying things.
So I'm with Anthea on this one. We have interest. We have three applicants, two slots. I'd be inclined to fill both. I would make a motion to fill the March 2024 seat with Mr. McGonigal. I don't know if they'll get a second. And then we can fill the March 2025 seat, either with Harut or Mr. Stevens.
All right. So why don't we stop while we do each separately?
That's fine.
So you make a motion to fill the 2020, the March 31st, 2024 seat with Bill McGonigal.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote. John?
No.
Uh, Mike?
No.
Anthea?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I vote no. All right, so that fails. Is there a second motion?
I move that we appoint John Stevens to the term to expire March 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anthea seconds it. Okay, roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Uh, John?
No.
Mike?
Yep.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote no. All right, so he passes.
Yes, three to two.
All right, so John's on for one year. Are there any other motions anyone would like to make?
Um, and that we appoint Harut Gazarian for the term to expire March 31st, 2025.
Same.
Um, roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right. Did you get all that, Patty?
Yeah.
So I want to thank everyone for coming in on that. On the Board of Appeals, thank you for your interest. Thank you for willing, your willingness to serve the town.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, going back to the top of our agenda, we have, we'll start with the Town Manager's report.
Thank you. So first up, I have a few appointments tonight in the Police Department, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personnel Administration, Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I have made the following permanent promotional appointments in the Police Department to first Catherine DePerna of Winchester, promotion to the rank of Sergeant, and Marco DiCarlo of Wakefield, promotion to the rank of Sergeant. And I respectfully request that the Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to promote Catherine DePerna to the rank of Sergeant and Marco DiCarlo to the rank of Sergeant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just want to mention, obviously, congratulations to both. Ms. DePerna is the first female sergeant in our Police Department, so I think that's a very exciting appointment to make this evening. Yes.
Congratulations, Catherine. Well deserved.
Yes. Just going over a few additional items I wanted to mention, I've mentioned as the past few meetings, the Network for Social Justice has a lived experience survey that's still ongoing, as does the Jink Center have a survey that's ongoing, and you can find a link to both of those surveys on the town's website. We are kicking into high gear in terms of our busy construction season. Eversource, who will be up later this evening, is doing quite a bit of work at the Cross Street. Our transfer station renovation should be wrapping up hopefully this month as weather permits our final paving out there, and that may get pushed depending what the weather, the week continues like we've had this week. Our modular classrooms are starting to be delivered up to the Parker School to be assembled and have everything in place for school to start up there in September. We have a Gail Associates who's working for us doing roof evaluations on four of the roofs that we've identified at spring and fall town meeting. We have a consultant doing the evaluation of the windows at Town Hall and Library that the Select Board approved ARPA funds for about a month ago. We have a, we are moving forward with the final construction plans for the McDonald Field Pump Station that will service the Arbor and Wendell Street neighborhood. We have a public meeting established tomorrow evening with the neighborhood just to update them, excuse me, Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM to update them on the project. We expect that project to go out to bid later this, later this month, and hopefully we'll have construction probably lasting 12 to 18 months. Not construction full-time, but there is a long lead time on several of the equipment that we need for that. Lake Street Bridge Project is a lot going on behind the scenes. National Grid, we expect to be out there starting their work the week of June 12th, and then our contractor will be in probably sometime around the week of June 17th with a bridge closure, full bridge closure. Eversource will have workday closures, but once they're complete and our contractor is ready to start, it will be a full bridge closure so that traffic will not be allowed to pass over the bridge. We expect that that closure will take, well, lost until probably mid-October. And we've been able to do some work with National Grid and Kodiak, our contractor, to shorten up the total duration of the closure. Originally, it was scheduled to be 120 days, and we're hoping to get it down closer to 90 or 100 days. So I appreciate everybody's willingness to work with us. And just a few other things. The Pride Fest is scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM from 4:30 to 6:30 PM out on the Town Common, and we have our Hazardous Waste Collection Day scheduled for Saturday, June 10th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the DPW. That's all I have.
Any questions for Beth on her report?
I want to make sure I'm sitting at the correct meeting here. Is this regarding the 25 River Street? No?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep, you're here. We'll get to it. Sure.
Just thinking about the traffic, when the bridge closes, so the left you take up by Bill and Bob's right before you get to Bill and Bob's?
Yep.
It's going to be a torture, and what's the plan for that? Because it's going to get backed up and be a mess, or are we going to have police maybe at certain hours, or, you know, working with Bloomberg on that, because that's already...
Sure. Yeah, so I, we haven't, we haven't planned for police details at specific intersections. We are working to put together like a, a notification to residents, kind of widely, like having flyers out at, you know, just reading flyers at the transfer station and figuring out other ways where we can notify residents of the upcoming closure and what the detour routes are. But I think it's going to be challenging. It's, it's good that it's starting over the summer. Traffic will be a little bit lighter, and it'll be, certainly be challenging once school starts in September.
Pray for good ra- good weather and...
That's right.
No delays. Any else? By anybody? Beth's report. All right. Great. We do have a hearing on at 7:45. We're a little past that right now, just because we started a little late. Apologize for that, but let's go to our hearings on the Eversource granted locations. So the first one is the 25 River Street. So the way this is worked is we'll have a presentation, I'll open it up for public comment, and then, you know, we'll discuss and deliberate amongst the board members. So, good evening.
Good evening. Jackie Dapby-Eversource. We would like to, Eversource and Verizon New England respectfully request a granted location for the relocation of 5 JO Falls on River Street. The purpose is to accommodate a new development in the area.
Great. Beth, do you have anything to add?
No, so there's been, Engineering and DPW have worked with Eversource quite a book, quite a bit to locate the poles, and then the conduit kind of follows suit from that, and so I have no concerns about what's been proposed.
So staff satisfied?
Yes. Yep.
And this has to do with the new 40B development?
Excuse me?
This is for the new 40B development to accommodate their electrical needs, right?
Yep.
Any board member, any questions for Jackie?
I do have question. I want to see where the pole is...
Hold on, ma'am. I'll call on you, okay?
Okay.
There's a protocol we need to follow, so I'll call on you. All right, so at this point, I'll open it up to the public. If you have questions, you can come forward. You can state your name and your address and ask your questions, okay? So come on up.
You want me to go up?
Yep, come on up to the microphone, because there's people watching at home, and you need to pick up your voice on the microphone.
Okay, so you want me to sit here?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Lisa Zhou. I live at 3 River Street. So the reason I'm here tonight, I want to make sure, you know, if we are going to build a pole, I want to be ma- I want to make sure, you know, the pole, we have the option. You know, it's not like a town to tell us, you know, what the pole is going to be. We want to see, you know, if, you know, our voice could be heard by the town. Because I want to make sure, you know, because I'm, my house right next to the big building construction. So for me, I really want to see the pole is going to be as far down the street as possible, because there are going to be a lot of residents live on our street. So I want to, I want to make sure, if my voice could be heard by the town, I want to make sure, you know, if the pole can be, you know, as down the street as possible, instead, you know, in front of my house or in front of my neighbor's house.
So let me, let me ask Beth, or Town Engineer, for a few more minutes, to respond, and, you know, can you give us the exact locations of these poles in relation to the neighbors' houses?
Yeah, I have a hard copy. You're welcome. Happy to give it to you. It'll be helpful.
I have one.
You want to just turn that TV?
Yeah.
May I have a copy as well? Thank you. Oh, here. Thank you. Okay.
I believe you said you're at 3 River Street?
Yes, my house is...
Your house is right here?
Yep.
And there's an existing pole right here in front of your house. The proposed poles are across the street, so there's a driveway that goes to the, that goes to the Willows. So there's two poles right there. It's across, this is your house over here. This is across the street. A third pole down here, near the, between 24 River Street and 30 River Street. Further down the street, there's two more poles. So this is 38 River Street here, down at the end of the street. And there's another pole here, between 38 and, I'm not sure. Jackie, do you know whatever the one is here?
No.
So it appear, Beth, if I understand correctly, there's no poles on...
That side.
That side of the street.
That side of the street. Your, the street is right, se- street side that you live on.
Okay, so there's no pole is going to be in front of my house, correct?
There, there's a pole that exists today in front of your house.
Yep.
And that pole will remi- will remain. The new poles are being installed across the street and further down the street from you.
Okay, okay.
Sir, can I get you to sit down for a minute?
My apologies. I can't, couldn't see anything.
Sure. So I'll give you a second. I'll give you an opportunity to talk in a second, okay? We're doing one at a time.
I couldn't see that. I couldn't see where I was going.
We're just going to give everyone an opportunity one at a time. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
That answer my question.
Okay.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure, you know, the news, you know, the new pole is, you know, is not going to be in front of my house, which you just confirm that with me. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a pole there today, which will remain.
Yeah, the pole there, because we, it doesn't bother us, but I'm, I'm afraid if you build a new pole, it's a huge one, you know, it's, it's going to cause a lot of inconvenience to us.
Right.
Yeah, thank you again.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. May I ask one more question?
Sure.
I know there are going to be, you know, huge traffic on my street. Is there any way the town can install, you know, like speed bump on the street for us? So I, I want everyone is able to drive slowly, instead of, you know, you know, speed up on our street, because it's a very small street, and we get used to very quiet, you know, street now, after, you know. This construction is over. We are going to deal with town of this traffic.
So Beth, as part of this project, there was a traffic study commissioned, right?
Correct.
Okay. And are there any traffic improvements?
The only improvement that was proposed on River Street was a new sidewalk to connect the, you know, the full end of the street out to Cross Street. There was not any traffic calming, so there were no speed bumps or anything proposed on your street. I think long-term, that's something the town could consider as part of our regular, you know, traffic evaluation process if, you know, after the project is completed, if you find that there's, you know, concerns that you have.
My only concern is after the project is complete, after so many tenants moving, it would be too late to install, you know, a speed, you know, bomb there.
It wouldn't be too late at that point. I think it, it would make sense to kind of wait and see what the traffic generated from the development is.
And that's kind of beyond the scope of what we have here tonight. So, you know, we're going to have to let, wait and see when it opens up, when it's rented, and then certainly if there are concerns, like we get a lot of the time, you know, we can address them and make changes if necessary.
Okay, we will come back. If, I notice if you think about like 200 cars is going to, you know, drive down my street.
If, if you notice issues, you know, certainly, you know, reach out to the Town Manager's office to start, and, and you can walk in, or you can, you know, call and, you know, voice your concerns.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I know, did you have your hand raised? Okay, come on up.
Come on up.
Just state your name and where you live.
Okay, I am Kathy Rominsky. I live at 10 River Street.
Okay.
So I was just wondering, so the pole in front of her house is not moving over into our yard? I can't tell by that angle. Is that correct?
So this pole, this is 3 River Street right here?
Yep.
The pole that exists today will stay there.
That stays. Okay.
Okay.
And so it doesn't move over.
And a new pole will be installed.
So can I ask why the poles are moving to the other side of the street?
That's a question for Eversource.
We need to supply the electricity to the new development.
Yeah, but why does it move to the other side of the street? Why isn't it on the same side as the new development?
Because of the range, the span. We need a, the span would be too long.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, just curious, because I didn't know if it was just an aesthetics thing, you know?
Hold on, wait. Nope. Wait, hold on. It's our turn right now.
Because I want to answer the question. It's not moving. There are going to be add one more, one brand new pole there. So the pole in front of my house still stays.
Nothing's happening to the pole in front of your house?
Correct. So it's not going to move to the other side?
No. We're just adding, we're adding new poles across the street from...
I did not.
From, from, from your house. Well, down the street.
Further down.
Further down the street. And you're at 10 River Street, you said?
10 River Street, yeah.
So it looks like there's no poles near your property. The closest pole is, is that, I can't read the writing exactly.
7, 7 Conan?
It's the drive.
51 Conan.
51 Conan.
Right, okay.
It's the drive by each other.
All right, that was our concern, just whether there's going to be one, because, you know, our house, it's just all frontage right there, and there, it just wouldn't have been really nice to have a pole in the front of our yard, you know. Okay, that was my main question. Is there questions about traffic on our street? Are you guys approaching that? No?
That's beyond the scope of tonight's...
Okay, that's what I thought.
We're just here to grant their, look, every time Eversource needs to put a pole in, we need to give what we call a granted location.
Okay.
A license to do so, and that's what they're out, here for tonight.
And that's being proposed to start when? Will it affect our, our power at the time?
No.
No, okay.
Do you know when they're going to do the work?
They want to get it done as soon as possible.
Well, they're, they're trying to lease the unit, so I assume they need more electricity.
Ah, yeah. Okay.
So probably ASAP.
Okay, that's it. That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, ma'am. I'll give you one more time.
Sorry, I forgot to ask a question. I know, I know you guys are going to add more manholes.
More manholes?
Yes. Where are those manholes going to be?
On River Street?
Yes.
Are we adding manholes to River Street?
Cross Street, yeah.
I think Cross Street.
Because on the statement, you, you guys mentioned it, that there'll be a line for, you know, conduits and manholes.
Oh, no. That statement is a general statement for everything that we, for all granted locations. So it's just a base statement of whatever might be, whatever they may be asking down below, which is in bold, states exactly what they're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
And we can confirm, there's no manholes in this work?
No manholes, no.
So there's going to be no manholes on the street?
Manholes would only be if you had underground. It's all, it's all overhead wires.
Okay, thank you.
Except for the conduit at the end that's going to the...
I'm going to return to my seat, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else on these two granted locations for Eversource that wants to be heard? Okay, I'll, oop, come on up.
Go for it.
Just state your name and your address.
My name is Paul Bruce. I'm the owner of 24 River Street in Winchester, and I'm concerned about the two poles that are going by the Willow Street fire exit, especially the pole south of the actual entrance. I've been involved with Mr. Ganji on the first draft of the pole location, and then it was relocated. Mr. Ganji was nice enough to come out today to actually show me the location, because there wasn't any markings on the ground. So I just want to confirm where Mr. Ganji had put the markings, that's where the actual pole is going to go.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that true?
We would generally call daily.
Because it's moved a couple of times.
Okay. So where they've told you the pole is going, that's where it's going at this point?
First time?
No, the market, no.
Well...
The most recent meeting that you had with Mr. Ganji is...
Which is this morning.
This morning is where the pole, pole is being located.
Beautiful.
Is that okay?
Wonderful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I will close public comment for this hearing. Any questions from any board members? Are we ready to take a vote on this? All right, if there's a motion, we can entertain it.
Um, move that we approve the Eversource granted location for the installation of the five joint ownership poles on River Street to accommodate the new development at 25 River Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing done. That passes. Did that cover both granted locations?
No, you need to go with the second part of it, yeah.
And move that we approve the Eversource granted location to install, install approximately 53 feet of conduit from new pole 15-3 within the public right of way to provide electric service to 25 River Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done. It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. So we've closed the hearing. We've voted. It's over. If you have any additional questions or you have concerns, you can certainly contact the Town Manager's office at any time. They'll help you.
Thank you. Good with this?
Yeah, you can take it with you. Yeah, all yours. You can take them both.
May I ask one more question? Do I need to go there?
No, we're done with the hearing. You can, you can, you can contact the Town Manager's office tomorrow. We just have a very busy agenda tonight that we have to get through.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. We have a license hearing. Oh, no, we just have a license that we have to allow. So First House Pub Dining Application, there was an amendment to it. So first house pub dining application, there was an amendment to it. Um, Beth, I don't know if you want to speak about this, but if you've driven down Main Street, you've noticed they've installed four trellises across, uh, their restaurant. Do you have something, Patty, on this, or no?
I, I don't, I just know that they had put up one, um, and everyone's seen them. What they look like, and it's just...
So they're up? They did, this wasn't part of their plan that they submitted in January. They did get a building permit for it?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and they've been inspected by the building department, they're satisfied with them, but, you know, typically, we approve all the outdoor dining applications in January. You know, I don't know how you want to handle this, but, you know, it was, um, I think staff's recommendation that we should at least take a vote, you know, to approve this, now that it's been amended like this. Or we can make them take them down. Either way.
I'm not, I'm not really too excited by the conduct of just, we gave a permit from a specific set of...
Yep.
Approvements. So now we, a resident wants to put something on, builds something on their house, and they're like, well, expand it, so we guess, you know, approve it. It's the same theory. So, I'm sure it looks, I don't even know if it looks great or not, but...
Well, I mean, we can certainly have them come in at our next meeting and, uh, explain their actions, and, you know, give everyone an opportunity to see it, maybe get some pictures of it, and if people want to wait on it.
Like, from a president's standpoint, shouldn't they take them down, come in and tell us what they want to do? I'm not trying to be mean about it, but it's just like a process type of thing.
Yeah, the process is you apply, we approve your plan, and you execute your plan as approved.
Right, and if you want mission creep someplace along the path, you come in and ask for permission. You don't construct it, then come back and say, hey, can I do that?
Yep.
So, I want, I think they should be down, that's, I'm not trying to be mean about it. Then they can go back for permission.
You said they had a building permit?
They got a building permit.
So the problem is internal that the building permit was issued without the board.
And that's what happened in other outdoor dining locations as well, right? So, I mean...
So they, they took a different set of plans to the building department than what we approved. And how often is that going? Is that like a routine thing?
Kind of a lot, I think.
Well, kind of, that's not good.
No, it's not.
No, no, I don't know if it, I don't think, so I think there was some confusion...
Yeah.
Amongst the restaurant, that they thought that the building per, getting a building permit was the last step in the process. They didn't realize that the select board needed to approve it. So they went, as soon as they got the building permit, they went and constructed them.
So was this, like, in the last two weeks? How recent is that sort of misaligned sequence of events?
I think it's two weeks or three weeks.
So I think they started putting something up, and then we pulled it back so that they could go through the process. And then, like you said, there was a building permit issued, and they thought that that was all they needed to do, which I think had been communicated, that they still had to come to the board.
So it was communicated by us, by the town, to them?
Correct.
Okay, that's different then, right? Because the building department's representative of the town.
Right, but...
So did the town?
And I wasn't, I wasn't the one doing all the communication, but my understanding is that they had been told previously that they had to come to the board, and then there was a confusion that, once they got the building permit, they thought that was all they had to do, so...
But they were told, they had to come back to this look, right?
That is my understanding, yes.
Yes. They have, they were informed that they had to come before the board.
And then they put it up anyhow? Is that right? I mean, I just want to sort of tell you yes and no, not like I think, I know, maybe, I believe, just yes and no.
I think there, there was some confusion, John, I mean, I don't think that there was any intent here to circumvent.
I got it.
Yeah, so I mean, it certainly, I think we need to be better about our process and make it clear. Um, you know, this happened with, you know, um, several other restaurants, because we were kind of, you know, with outdoor dining, building the plane, you know, as we were flying it, and so, um, you know, I think we just need to clarify, especially, it's going to be the same restaurants that are doing this, you know, year after year, so...
So they wouldn't be the first ones?
No.
So they don't want to, you know, as an example, then, that's, that's not fair.
Right.
Right, so, okay.
I think they were try, I think they were doing what, and, and I, what I would be, you know, more offended by if there were other retailers or, you know, other businesses that were complaining about these structures that either impeded view of their store, that's what we've had problems with in the past, so. Um, here, I, I haven't heard anything yet from anyone else that's complained about the trellises, right? I mean, it seems...
Um, nobody's said anything to me, I don't know, you have heard anything, yeah.
So, did they have these last year, these trellises?
They had umbrellas last year. So rather than have umbrellas, they thought that this was safer, so they weren't flying out. We can, we, I, I mean, we can get the, you know, all the facts and have them come in.
It's just, if we have a process, like, we have, we're gonna have a discussion tonight about DPW and the process, and it's gonna be interesting. And so, I just want to see if we have a process, if we're gonna stick to it, or if we're not going to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, we are clear, I think, from our office and our staff communication, that if you can build what you had approved by the board in whatever, March, and if there's a change, it has to come back to you for approval.
The communication was clear to them, that they needed to get board approval. And they, they thought that the building commission, getting the building permit was their approval. They didn't realize, they thought that that meant they were fine to do it.
Or they just didn't ask, right? Or did they ask someone?
No, they didn't ask.
They didn't ask, they put in the building department, coenforcement, if this was, if they had come back before us? They just assumed?
They were told by the town manager's office that they had to come to the board, so I, I don't know what the... I don't know what the conversation, and it wouldn't be appropriate.
No, I think they thought, once they had the building permit, they thought the building permit wouldn't issue until we approved it.
I thought Beth just said that, that she told them they had to come back.
But I'm speculating, here's what we're gonna do, let's bring them in next meeting, and they can explain it. Let's do that. We'll have them come in next meeting, um, we can have, you know, maybe some type of memo from Jen or something about what transpired.
But just also going forward, if there's like, if there needs to be a cover sheet that says if you're gonna deviate from the plans, you need to come back, I don't, it's not a power thing. I, I don't care if you take it away from us and give it to the building department.
No, I, I think we're all in agreement that that's the process.
I, I think having that process clear, clarified more with the building department in writing is something that, um, that we, we probably can do a little bit better on, because the, the issue that, when this happened last time, was that when somebody installed a structure and it was, um, you know, blocking, you know, another retailer's location and hadn't been approved, it, it was, um, the building department that they came in and they, they had the issue with it more than we did, right? So, um, it's, um, I think whose, whose authority it is to approve that is not clear. Um, it's really, it's really both, and I think, um, people, um, there's miss, you know, conception about that, so...
Is there just a way that we can tag the current document such that when this comes up in the next year for outdoor dining applications, that we're able to make a revision to it that helps to clarify this? So, so that it's not on anyone to remember, but we have it?
Yeah, I mean, the document's pretty clear, and it says, any changes need to be approved by the select board. And it's, I think it's in all caps.
In the policy or the license?
I think it's a license agreement.
Yeah.
But, no, it's, we can certainly look at that. All right, let's move on. Public comment, so it's eight fifteen, I will, um, allow a period of, uh, five or ten minutes of public comment. If anyone's here for public comment, you can raise your hand, we'll recognize you, come on up. Uh, you can, um, just state your name and address and talk about anything you want for three minutes. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll keep moving. Down to our business agenda, item number two, uh, which is our MS four update.
So every year, um, we come to the board to provide an update, putting my town engineer hat on. We come to the board to provide an update on our MS four stormwater permit. Um, we are in year five of what is supposed to be a year, five-year permit, but, um, EPA has administratively continued the permit until they have a new permit in place, so we just keep chugging.
Yeah.
Um, so Drew Schwartz from, uh, Weston Sampson's here tonight to give the board an overview of where we are.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me here tonight. So, just to provide a little background here for anybody that might not be familiar with the MS four permit, so it regulates basically stormwater point source discharges to waters of the US from the town's municipal storm drain system. So the municipal storm drain system is comprised of all the town's drainage infrastructure, drainage pipes, manholes, catch basins, outfalls, um, any stormwater treatment structures. So, we're in currently basically the, and this is an EPA-driven permit, it's all about water quality. So we're basically in the second issuance of this permit, it first came out in two thousand and three. Like Beth said, it's a five-year permit. Um, the reissued permit became effective in July first, two thousand and eighteen, there was like a one-year delay, so technically, it ended up being kind of a four-year permit that expired in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The town got notice that the permit wasn't administratively continued. Um, we're currently in permit year five, which is ending at the end of this month. There is expected to be a draft permit issued this fall. Can take a while, the last one took a while to come out, so not too sure, um, if that will actually happen, but we'll see, but that permit would come out for public comment, and would, it would take a while before we actually have a new actual permit in place. Word on the street is that the permit's gonna be more about, um, implementation. We've been doing a lot of planning under this current phase of the project, so implementation of stormwater treatment structures to improve stormwater quality. Oops, sorry, back there. Um, so there's, basically, these are the six main minimum control measures in the permit. Um, these are the main elements of the permit, where are their, if best management practices are implemented under these individual measures, there'll be an improvement in stormwater quality, so we're gonna kind of just walk through each of these minimum control measures tonight and the status of compliance. So year five accomplishments, um, the town has a written stormwater management plan, basically outlines all of the permit requirements. Um, each year we update this plan documenting the town's compliance to date. Um, it's available on the town's website. We're actually gonna be posting the updated, um, version of this to reflect year five activities on June twelfth, and it will be available for public comment for usually like a two, two-week period. First minimum control measure is public education and outreach. Um, if you've checked out the town's website on MS four compliance, it's pretty robust these days. Um, a lot of updates, we're looking at different target audiences, um, at this point. We've, we've sent, I think, two messages to, or more to each of these audiences in different formats, um, again, with the goal of stormwater pollution prevention, knowing that some of these audience are a contributing factor. We're doing targeted messaging this year to developers and landscape companies, um, on use of low impact development, also on, um, looking at chloride reduction. It's a new impairment this year, um, that we'll talk about, but, um, as you can see, there's just a bunch of different items that we're, we're targeting with public education. Um, certain target messages are required each year based on certain impairments that the town has, whether it be bacteria, phosphorus, so, um, and again, the new one chloride, looking at salt use. So hopefully, hopefully, you've seen many of these, um, kind of educational flyers that have been distributed. Public participation and involvement, I know Beth mentioned that you have to have a hazardous waste collection day coming up this Saturday. Again, all about keeping different forms of hazardous waste out of the town's drainage system, making sure those are disposed appropriately, so all those initiatives are helpful under the permit. Um, you had a successful cleanup day on April twenty-second, it looks like really large participation, a lot of, um, debris material was collected for proper disposal, which was great. Um, obviously, other different initiatives going on in town, so we report on all of these different public participation activities, again, and just providing for public review of the stormwater management plan in the annual reports also gives the opportunity for the public to participate.
Did you get our artwork down?
Oh, you're talking about the...
About all of the trash we pulled out of the river?
I did, I actually looked at it, yeah. I saw that, so you guys, yeah, stuffed it with some of the materials collected to kind of put that on display? Yeah, no, that was pretty interesting, with all those pictures. And I heard that it looked like the Boy Scouts were also canoeing to pick up debris as well, so, yeah, no, that was great. Great participation. Um, so the next one, illicit discharge detection eliminations, this is all about trying to identify any non-stormwater discharges that are getting into the town's drainage system. A lot of this has to do with, for instance, um, if you have a deteriorating sewer that might be leaking and getting into your storm drain system through exfiltration. Um, I will say, obviously, the town has a very robust, um, you know, capital improvement program related to the stormwater system, a lot of rehabilitation and investigation has gone on over the years. So I feel like as part of this effort, we really haven't found too much, but basically, the catchment investigations consist of going into the drainage system during dry weather, trying to isolate any flow that we do see, and we test that flow to see if it's an indicator of likely sewer input. So we have some areas, we've actually, to this, to date, we've really investigated the entire town's drainage system. We finished it up this year, but we're kind of going back over certain sources that we found. We probably have like eight or so areas that we're kind of following up on, um, and so we'll continue to investigate those kind of going forward. Um, in addition to the, kind of those dry weather investigations where we're opening up manholes and trying to isolate flow and sampling, we're also doing wet weather outfall sampling. So we've done about fifty percent of the town's outfalls. So the town has around, I think, a hundred, I want to say a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty outfalls, um, and so we're about fifty percent complete, and that is to be done by year ten, so we've still got some time to complete that effort. Um, we also do, you know, annual training with municipal employees. We did that at the DPW this year on illicit discharge detection elimination. Obviously, municipal employees who are working in the field every day, your highway department, your various utility departments are even more apt to find illicit discharges and report those back, so we can investigate those, so we work hand-in-hand with them as well. Construction site runoff control, just annually, we're tracking site plan reviews, inspections, and enforcement actions. All of that information gets reported to EPA, showing compliance with the town's storm drain use regulations. Under post-construction stormwater management, um, last year, we developed three different reports, a street design and parking lot report with the town that looked at impervious cover impacts and opportunities to reduce impervious cover, um, so kind of a over, overview of the town's existing regulations, um, and made some recommendations where potential improvements could be made to those regulations. Also looked at, you know, encouragement of green infrastructure practices, what the current, town currently does, if there's any bandwidth to further encourage, um, green infrastructure as part of development. So as far as those two reports go, we know we met with the planning director, Beth, at the time. I believe that position is still currently open, so I think we're waiting at this point for someone to fill that position, and then we're gonna go back to those reports and try to move forward with maybe some potential, um, updates to existing regulations in those areas. Um, we also have a BNP retrofit inventory report that we've developed with the town, so that really just kind of looks at opportunities to incorporate stormwater treatment structures as part of, um, ongoing municipal projects or roadway reconstruction projects. Um, so obviously actively looking for those opportunities as well to improve water quality. Um, pollution prevention, good housekeeping, last minimum control measure here, um, catch basin cleaning. Obviously, the town has come a long way, um, with their catch basin cleaning, you pretty much have someone almost out there, I think, on a full-time basis when he's available cleaning catch basins. The town also contracts out catch basin cleaning, which was just kind of, a big part of that was just, I finished up recently, actually. There's still some ongoing maintenance related to other stormwater treatment structures, um, but we want to make sure those sumps are never more than fifty percent full under the permit. The town sweeps the entire town twice per year. Um, you go out and inspect and maintain your best management practices to make sure they're functioning properly. Also, a big move to kind of do more electronic data collection, so even with your BNP's, we're working on, um, developing specific electronic inspection forms for each of your different type of municipal BNP's that you have, so this is all about trying to just, like I said, improve electronic data collection, attach everything to your GIS, so all of that information is, is memorialized in, in your GIS system. We also have stormwater pollution prevention plans that were developed a while ago for the DPW and the transfer station. the DPW and the transfer station. We continue to inspect those facilities quarterly, those are, you know, some of your top municipal waste handling facilities. We also do training annually as well on those plans for DPW employees. And so the last big piece of this permit outside of the, kind of the main elements is all about impaired waters. So basically, the town is tributary to, has, has different impaired waters for phosphorus, the Mystic, the Wedge Pond, and Aborigona River. Because the entire town is tributary to the Mystic, basically the entire town is subject to this phosphorus impairment. And last year, what we did was we developed a phosphorus source identification report, so we looked at phosphorus loadings from individual catchment areas that were based on the amount of impervious area and land use data that's available, and those catchments that contribute a higher phosphorus load, we want to target for retrofit and try to infiltrate more of that stormwater, so less of it reaches receiving waters. So we've been working to, we prioritized a bunch of catchments last year, and now we've been moving more toward evaluating the feasibility of actually retrofitting a lot of those catchment areas with BNP's and trying to prioritize, so this was kind of the phase two of that effort. So the town was required to implement what's called the demonstration project by the end of permit year six. We've leveraged an existing project that the town has already constructed, but as part of that effort, we do go through and calculate the phosphorus reduction associated with implementing certain stormwater treatment structures, and so that's kind of ongoing. The town also received a grant this year to incorporate what's called some infiltration trenches, so again, localized trying to infiltrate stormwater associated with certain catch basins on a smaller scale, widespread scale, into different areas of town, again, where we have higher phosphorus loading catchments, so that work is kind of under design right now and is expected to be constructed in the fall. Last impairment here, I just want to talk about chloride, this was a new impairment this year for the Aborigo, came out actually last year for the Aborigona River, so there's an integrated list of water that looks at different impairments put out by DEP, and so the latest impairment that was added was chloride. So based on that, it required the town to develop a chloride reduction plan, and so again, chloride impairments, it's really all about source control, looking at salt use, looking at how we can reduce the amount of salt that's being applied in certain areas or calibration rates, and so the plan kind of looks at all of that. So we've kind of just, just finished that draft plan, and we'll be working with the town to review it and try to come to a final plan that, the next step would be kind of implementation. And so we've also done some public education, that's one of the flyers that was put together, looking at that, and it's not just, it's, you know, the municipal side of things, but then also the private side of things as well in terms of salt application. Again, we've got the updated stormwater management plan, it's going to be posted on the town's website for public comment on June 12th. Every year, we do have to report back to EPA on what the town has accomplished, so once the permit year ends, the town has about three months to pull their annual report together that's filed at the end of September, and so we just want to be as, obviously, as transparent as possible and report on all the great progress that the town is doing. EPA does and can audit communities to make sure they're complying with the permit, we always want to make sure our records are in order and stuff, and so all very kind of important. So just kind of briefly looking ahead to year six and what's next, obviously, we talked about how we still have a lot of outfalls to sample during wet weather, we're going to continue that. We're also going to continue to follow up on some of those catchment investigations where we identified likely sewer input, incorporating the wet weather outfall sampling as a result as well of those showed likely sewer input, kind of going back into those catchments and further investigating. Hopefully, like we said, when the new planning director's on board, we'll move forward with the impervious cover and green infrastructure report recommendations. We're going to look at, you know, all the catch basin cleaning data we've collected to date and further optimize catch basin cleaning practices and frequency of certain catch basins that are filling up, the sumps are filling up more quickly. We'll continue the inspection and maintenance of the stormwater treatment structures, especially as the town implements more, more treatment, treatment structures, and that list kind of expands. We'll continue our annual training and our SWIP inspections, we're going to be in the design of other potential BNP retrofit projects, look for those opportunities to incorporate stormwater treatment structures as part of other municipal projects, and again, we talked about finalizing that chloride reduction plan and beginning implementation of that plan as well. So continues to be a busy front on the MS4 permit.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and if anyone has any questions on the permit or anything?
Questions?
That I can answer?
Very thorough.
That's great.
Yeah. Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Eversource 345, you represented some Eversource, want to come to the table? Come on up. How are you? Good evening, I'll turn it over to Beth, who's going to explain what we're here to talk about tonight regarding this project.
Thank you, so just a couple of things, Eversource has mostly finished up the work on the 115 project, we just have some pavement marking, so we're here to talk about the 345 KV project, which goes from Woburn down Washington Street, down Cross Street to Woburn on the other ends. I know you all were, well, a different subset of you was here a few weeks ago to give the board an update, since that time, staff has had a few meetings with them, and there's a few things this evening for the board to hear about and discuss. The first is, I think, a simple one, so they're, previously in 2011, or 2021, the board authorized Eversource and their contractor to use the town-owned Washington Street Park for laydown space, so we have an agreement to extend that license agreement through November 15th with the option to extend it for a few additional months, so that they're able to use that laydown space through the, hopefully through the duration of their construction and certainly this construction season. The second piece is related to the HDD work that will be happening on Cross Street, hopefully this summer, so they have a significant amount of work to do to get underneath the Aborigona River and underneath the railroad bridge on Cross Street, which requires basically a directional drill from Forest Street to Holton Street, which is a substantial undertaking. So I think we're here first tonight just to understand what the impacts will be on Cross Street as a result of that work, and second, they have to fuse the pipe that will ultimately be pushed through from one end to the other, and it's 100, sorry, 700 to 750 foot long section, and so they're looking for a place to lay that out for a period of four to eight weeks. I think we have a couple of options, which they'll review this evening, but those, those are really the kind of the three main points of what we want to go over this evening. Anything else I've missed?
If you could just all introduce yourself and your role in the project, that'd be helpful.
Yes, thank you, board, my name's Jason Wright, I'm the community relations specialist for Eversource. If I may real quickly, I'd like to introduce two members, two new members to the Woburn to Wakefield project team. To my right is Jeff Ciceron, he's the new project manager, replacing Mike Hager, who has since retired, as well as Glenn Muck, who has, from our rights and survey department.
All right. The floor's yours.
Good evening. Thank you. Quickly, you can go, uh, the, on Mike Hager, who is since?
Not here anymore.
So I'll be taking on the torch now, but quickly, would like to thank the town for great feedback, we met with the town of Winchester last week, with the town manager that gave us great feedback on the, on our goal to have a laydown and a bike path, and those feedbacks have been taken into perspective, we've addressed them in the plan, submitted for review, and our goal today is to review not only the bike path, and also we have an opportunity that we'd like to address, and now pass it to my colleague Glenn to kind of address the things.
Good evening, my name's Glenn Muck, I'm with transmission rights department. I'm here basically to talk about the element of the project that Beth described as the fused length of pipe that's going to be pulled back into the bore hole is 705, 10, 20, we're not 100% sure until they finally make the final drill length, but to enable that, we have to take the individual sticks of the pipe, fuse them together, and create a long 700, 100-foot piece of it, and obviously, 700 feet of pipe is a lot of pipe to put down somewhere. It was identified that there could be two possible areas that could be done with this, and this was on the bike path from Cross Street South, or alternatively, in the, in an area, grassy area of Davidson Park, which is on the north side of, you know, Cross Street, in that same general area. The plans that are being shown on the screen right now are the plans that show, let me, let me back up for one second, we, so we broke up, the, the plans are in three different phases, the plans. The first plan, which is for, being shown is for the bike path on the south side, we've got, we're describing as phase one, and then there's another sheet which is phase two and phase three. So phase one will be the activity of actually fusing the pipe, it starts out as one pipe at 50 feet long, and then a second pipe and third pipe, so it progresses from that length out to 700 feet long. So the plan you're seeing right there depicts with the overall shape and length of the pipe would be, once it's fused and put in place during the fusing activity, the, we identify an area where we need to protect the pavement in the first part of the bike path, just off of Cross Street, and then generally depict the location of the pipe where it will be staged, there's actually two pipes, because there's two bore holes that are being placed, so there's two pipes that will be staged out along the bike path as we're doing the work. The, once that work is done, it's, there's really nothing that goes on with the pipe for four to eight weeks, depending on how they complete the bore holes and get them ready for to pull the pipes back inside. So the second phase, and I can go over each plan and talk about, you know, specific points if you're concerned about, but the second phase will then be storing the pipe just on the side of the bike path for the four-week or eight-feet, eight-week interval, depending on which, how the bore holes get finished, they'll pull one pipe and put it in place, then the second bore hole that's drilled will get it pulled in place. So the idea would be is that there would be one, you know, two, two pipes for at least the four-week period, and then one pipe by itself for the remaining eight weeks as they pull in the second line. The, we anticipate that when the pipe is being stored there, that for the most part, it will be off the bike path, and there'll be at least three-foot clear distance from the edge of the bike path to the bulk of the pipe. There is a section of the pipe, I guess this is, can try to switch.
Can it be more than three feet?
Uh, yes, so the bulk of it, I'll throw a broad number out, I'll say about 500 feet, where the, but, the, the pipes will be pushed far to the fence, I just stand up here and point this out, there is a, there's a fence that runs from the street here all along the side of the Aborigona River, out to a spot here, and then there's a gate and it turns and goes across. So for the, for the vast majority of the pipe, there's more than a distance that it could push up against the side of the fence, and there'll be, you know, much more than three feet.
How much more?
There was locations where I did measurements on it that showed that the fence, the fence was as much as?
Four feet?
Was, well, the fence was, let's say, 13 feet away, so if we use five feet of, of pipe or of space, 13, five, can give you an idea that maybe there's an area where there's as much, as much as eight feet.
I think that's the, the, you, less of that section that has that much distance, more of it, that's a little bit.
I would say there's probably a good 300 to 400 feet, there could be as much as that much, I don't have those, that information that I collected as far as the offsets with me right here, but it's, there's a significant spot in it.
So let me ask you a question, let's say you hit a problem in your directional drilling, which I think has happened in this town in the past, what, you know, just more than four to eight weeks, what do you do with this pipe, you just leave it there until you're done?
The pipe would need to be staged in that location, because at that point, I don't know that we have any really ability to move it anywhere or take it someplace else. So, you know, the two identified, the two locations were identified, which is the, the south side bike path or the north side, which is Davidson Park, the alternative would be, and from that perspective, to have the pipe positioned in Davidson Park, which is, keeps it away from the bike path and makes it a little easier for a continued use of the bike without the impact that you're, I think, alluding to, if the idea of the pipe were there for over eight weeks.
So let's talk about?
Just want to clarify, there is a section here where the bike, where the pipe would be laid on top of the bike path, and so the path width would be restricted, which is the area that I have particular concern about.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to kind of address was the next, is that, if I can switch to the next sheet, which I'm not sure if I can just go page down?
Hit the down arrow.
At the top there.
Next to 1 and 6, yep.
Okay. Yeah, so what this depicts, and I actually have plans that makes it easy for everybody to see, that, that show, so these, so this is the bike, the bike path, and so there's 10 of them here, if you want to pass along, the first page was phase one, the second page was phase two, and they, they depict exactly what we're seeing here, so, like I said, it was a substantial distance where the pipe was, was more than three feet away from the edge of, edge of pave, which the three feet was identified as kind of a, a minimum standard offset that you want to have from vertical objects associated near a bike path. Down in this area, you can see from right here, where my red line starts, that's the area where the pipe would be at, at least three feet away, right, at that spot here, and back here, it's actually more than three feet, then at this point, right here, it again becomes more than three feet away from the bike path, because now we're deviating away from the drill altogether, so you can see why we have like switched, extra space over here. The next line, lines that identify are the blue, which identify exactly where the pipe would be, right at the edge of the pave.
So when you're fusing this pipe, you're doing it on the bike path, right?
I would describe it as partially in the bike path and partially in the grassy area along the bike path.
So is the bike path going to be open while you're fusing this?
The intention is to have a posted police officer at a detail spot down here and up here, that would, you know, help guide the, the, you know, bike users, bike path users through that area.
How long is it going to take you to fuse it?
About five days is the plan. So the next thing I want to illustrate on here is that the yellow area identifies where I anticipate that the pipe, the two pipes, the two plates together would be two feet onto the edge of the pave.
Got it.
Then utilizing some barriers to help make sure that people are aware that the, that the pipe is there and to make sure it's visually, you know, noticed by them, we put the barrier along the side of them, so those cones basically take about another foot, so generally, on the 10-foot wide path, in this area, there would be seven feet of pavement that would be available for the bike riders to go through. Generally, it's 10 feet, but in this area, it would be seven feet. The plan as part of that storage would be to put signs at these locations, essentially 100 feet in front of those spots where it's on the edge of the pavement, that identify that bike riders should dismount and walk their bikes through that area.
Is there anything on Davidson Park in this?
Yeah, the next set of three sheets talks about Davidson Park. So the third sheet, which is described as phase three, shows the activity of pulling it out of there and how we're going to pull it up the street, just basically give you an idea of the illustration of how it was intended to be moved out of the area.
It's like a flexible pipe, it would make that, make that turn.
It's flexible to a point, individually, they're not so flexible, but as you put it together, they, they become a little more flexible, and they can certainly make this turn and get it up the street in the shape that they need to. So I can, I can move on and, and describe the activities at Davidson Park if that's, if you want me to do that, or if you have any further questions on this specific.
If the pipe only takes five days to fuse, why are you doing it so early in the drilling process?
One of the concerns is that as they're drilling, they want to get the pipes in place so that there's no hiccup in, in having it ready to be pulled in line as soon as the drill hole is ready.
How long is it going to take to get the drill hole ready?
I'm sorry?
How long is it going to take to get the drill hole?
I believe that the first drill hole is anticipated to take four weeks, because it's, we're talking about four to eight-week periods.
Are you our drillers?
I am the general contractor, so I travel forward, I'll come up and, I'm trying to hide in the back, but.
It's not going to happen, not with this, not with this level of project.
No, so yeah, it's about four weeks for each pipe. Typically, when they, what they're going to do is they're going to drill a pilot hole through, they're going to ream it back, then they're going to ream it again and get the hole wide enough that it can actually accept the pipe, and they want the pipe basically ready immediately upon that second ream, because they've opened up that hole and they've compressed the soil out, and so they want to be able to pull it right back through as soon as they have that, they typically wouldn't even ream that second run on a, on a Friday, because they don't want to have a Saturday, Sunday go by, so typically, they're going to want to pull it that next day. The other concern we had and why we were trying to find a spot to leave it out there is that on the pullback, this is kind of on the, I guess, opposite side of the street is where the HDD is, so when they, if, when they go to fuse it while they're drilling, might become an issue with traffic closures. You've got a closure on this side of the street, and now you're trying to do a closure on this side of the street to get the pipe into place, and they're going to conflict with each other, so that was a concern with why we felt like we needed to get it done. If we were in Davidson Park, we could potentially do it while we're drilling, because we could use some of Davidson Park, but in this, there's two different scenarios, we're just trying to give you guys the facts on, on both scenarios. In this scenario, I, I believe the traffic closures would be conflicting, you know, they're kind of right up here with one pit and here with another pit, so as you're drilling, you'd be, you'd be conflicted with each other.
Just for the board, can you explain the drilling operation that will take place?
Sure, so it's a, there's a, it's a horizontal directional drill, so there's, there's a couple of different trenchless crossings you guys have probably seen on these projects. The jack and bore is involved two deep pits, which was initially what this was designed to be, and it was going to be two deep pits, and then you drill and connect the pits. A horizontal directional drill actually starts at the surface, and it's two pits, but they're basically, they'll be, you know, maybe they'll, they'll drill, dig the face of the pit down 10 feet, but it won't be down 25 feet, and what they do is they direct the drill down, and they drill that pilot tube under probably, I think it's 25 feet by the time it gets under the Aborigona, and then they come up and they can control the head of the drill so that they can, they can hit basically within, you know, six inches of where they want to hit, and so they're tracking that drill head the whole way through. From there, like I said, they're going to ream out that hole twice and widen the hole, and then they pull the pipe back through.
So that's what's happening below the ground, but what's happening above the ground in our street? Like, how's this going to affect the traffic and the neighborhood and the businesses?
Did you have a second presentation that had some information about that? You sent us earlier this week?
We're working with Muckford right now and putting together the TMP, so our subcontractor who's working on that.
It's the second one that I showed you where it says PowerPoint presentation, that one there.
Yep.
So you've got, ooh, excuse me, what you have is your drill location is up here, and they're going to drill underneath to a receiving pit right here. Basically, during the day, you'll have equipment up there working on that. At the end of the shift, we've arranged it so that we can steel beam and plate these and open the roadway back up. The initial, the initial jack and bore, to be honest with the board, called for a complete detour for like two to three months. This will allow us to actually keep traffic flowing while we're working, and then we'll be able to open the whole road back up at the end of the shift, so I think there's a benefit in traffic management-wise, we will have an impact while we're there. There's not a lot that goes on here at Forest Street while we're, while we're drilling, because you're drilling from this side, so until you get there, you really don't have as much activity over here. Over here, you will have a drill rig, there will be some frac tanks, there'll be some roll-offs in the closure, we have identified spaces to store most of the equipment off the street with one or two exceptions, and we walked through that with the DPW last Wednesday.
So I understand that when, when you're, go ahead.
The, the drill tanks, the frac tanks are going to be in place for the duration?
Correct.
Basically, in the grass strip area, so they're like large?
They're large tanks, yeah, I think we called them out, is what, they're 50 feet long?
That's what I understand.
Those will be? Those will be-
It's like basically your typical frac tank that you see in a, in a dewatering. What it does is that holds the drilling fluid, so they recycle the drilling fluid and use it as much as they can. They keep pumping it back out, put it in that tank and they, and the reason we can't move that at the end of the shift, like we're going to move everything else is when it's full of drilling fluid, it's just so extremely heavy.
Where, where are those going to be?
So, there is one that is up here by Bolton on this corner and there is one that is here kind of in between, um, the veterinary group and PC Quick Help.
On the-
On the sidewalk and the road?
The, the sidewalk will remain open, kind of half on the sidewalk, half on the road because we're trying, what we're trying to do is when we leave, we want to open up both lanes of traffic. So, we may have to take some parking across the street here in order to shift the parking, in order to shift the traffic over when we have those sitting.
They're going to re-stripe the low, road to allow when, not during construction hours, to eleven-foot lanes of traffic. And like you said, you might have to take parking from the other side.
From a, just, from a pedestrian perspective, as you know, if you've been over there, you can only cross under the bridge on, on this far side of the road. So, I just want to make sure that, that's not impacting that sidewalk.
That sidewalk will remain open. So, we're right on the edge of it and you'll, you'll have, there's a retaining wall on one side and you'll have a big tank on the other side, but it is four feet wide.
And how long is this going to go on for? Four to eight weeks?
This is the four to eight weeks.
And when would you start?
Um, so, that's a good question because right now I tend to have the driller set to come in on July tenth. I'd like to start, um, the pre-work we have to do for the driller, there's some utility bypasses we have to do that we're working with Paul Gangeon. I'd like to start that work in like June twentieth if we can get all the approvals in place. But again, we're, um, short of, of, I can't say when I'm going to start if I don't have all the approvals, so I'm not trying to tell you when I'm going to start. But that would be the basic plan, is that sometime around June twentieth, we can start establishing the pits, doing the, the bypasses. After the Fourth of July, we, we bring out the driller.
It's in all of our best interest for you to start sooner rather than later so that this work can get wrapped up before summer, so.
I totally agree. We'll work any hours we have to or I'll try to get them to work any hours again. It's a traveling crew, like I explained. So, sometimes they do want to go home, the drilling crew, they come in from the midwest.
So, so-
I was just going to ask, what's the, like, the volume level of this? What's it going to be for, because there's, uh, more or less, there's not a lot of houses, but right that, that Holden Street area, there's five or six houses right there and there's houses at the corner of Forest.
So, at night, nothing.
Yeah.
And during the day, it would be a typical construction activity volume. You will have an excavator moving around, you know, the drill rig doesn't make a ton of noise. Um, but you know, the typical construction, kind of like we've had, as we've been drenching down the street is what you'll hear.
And the drill rig is stationary at the, at the, um, western pit?
Yeah, it basically sits right in front of, um, the, the fluid tank there and it's just drilling and then we'll move it off the road at the end of the shift.
So, the issue is where you have Winchester Veterinary Group right there to PC Quick Help. I would say, you know, sixty percent of our after-school activities for the entire town happen in that one block. You have gymnastics academy, Russian math, you have, uh, stage music center, you name it, kids stock, you name it.
Preschool.
They all have summer programs too, okay? Um, so, it's, you know, I mean, a highly traveled area in a highly, um, congested area, you know, full of kids. Um, so, you know, this has got to be done before school starts or we're going to be in a world of pain. Um, so, you know, like Beth said, it's our best interest to get you started sooner, um, and we'll work to do that. But you have to understand, and this comes to public relations, who's that, who's community? That's you and you? This has got to be, you know, your best effort. This is probably the toughest part of the project, you know, not just, you know, to the neighbors and the businesses there, but to our entire community and we'll help with that. You know, certainly we have the ability to do a reverse now one call or, or blast it out, um, or leaf with the transfer station or things like that. But, um, you know, people need to understand that, you know, really local traffic should really be flowing through Cross Street at this time for this eight week. And it's summer, it's a little empty around here, but unfortunately, the people that stick around, a lot of their kids are going to activities at this, at this juncture. So, you just need to be mindful of that.
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason we went back to the drawing board to say, okay, if we can't do this whole detour because it's really just not going to be feasible for everyone, what's, what's another method we can look at? And that was where we came up with the directional drill and taking our, um, equipment off the street as much as humanly possible and reopening both lanes. Because again, it was, it was initially shut down and, and we knew that was going to be an issue for the town, especially once we looked at all of the traffic in that area.
Okay. So, understanding that that's the operation going on in the street and below the street, now you understand what the fusing of the pipe, I guess, is, is needed for. So, you've got two options. This looks like Davidson Park you just passed out?
Yeah, I can switch over and, uh, go to the next sheets.
And where do we stand with Davidson Park in terms of restoration? I mean, wasn't there damage to some project that, do we restore it?
NRT, yeah, we did, we completed the feasibility study for trying to get them to fund the next phase.
So, so this plan depicts the area on Davidson Park where we would try to use to do the fusing and staging of the equipment. You see, this was included generally to give you an idea of where we were going to be on the street itself. You see the bench, the two large trees that show up, the two trees show up right in this area right here. Uh, the intention is to steel plate the area in between here to create two work zones, essentially a twenty by fifty and a forty by sixty work zone, which is depicted in the green. The pipe fusing equipment, the trailer that has the pipe on it and a loading, uh, like an excavator style machine will be there positioned to pick up the pipe and install it into the machine. This is the, uh, image of the machine itself that's used for fusing it. The pipes are added one end, the fuse is in the center and it's pushed out the other end of it. We set up rollers as part of the fused length pipe to bring it up and we pull it. And this setup will be with something like a, a skid steer. We pull a pipe on the rollers up to its position as it's fully fused. This just depicts an area where there's a, an RCP, reinforced concrete pipe that drains through the park right here. There's actually a catch basin in that area. The intention was to put down a piece of steel pipe in that area just to protect that pipe. I don't think that would create any problem to begin with, but we want to put the pipe down or the steel down just to protect that a little bit longer. This is actually showing a little wider than the ultimate space what we need during the four to eight week storage just because between the two pipes being there and a machine that will need to be, um, brought back from the end back to the, to the front area where the fusing is. That's why I depicted that area, I think, on the plans, I showed it as being sixteen feet wide, again, read it right here, but I think that's what I showed on the plan as far as that working area, it's all sixteen feet wide. So, after the, the pipes are fused, we, we won't need as large a footprint for the storage. And the intention is to, um, keep the, keep the pipes as close together as possible. Uh, put a, essentially a, a construction fence around the length of it so it's visible to people if they happen to be coming through the park, you know, when it's dark or that type of thing, um, just to kind of create as much safety around the, the pipe as possible. So, that would be the position that you see it depicted together with, um, protection. That's showing these major trees right here, illustrate that we'll put up protection around just to make sure that we don't have any air in equipment that we get too close to those trees. Obviously, we want to preserve the trees. And then the third, uh, image on here shows, again, kind of the general depiction of the pullback where basically it's turned and just in the blue line indicates, you know, the travel path and pulling the pipe and bringing it up and getting it in place in the, in the bore hole.
Either area, I assume you guys would restore it to its current state afterwards?
Yeah, I think the intention, well, with, the work that I've done with Beth was to go over the, the proposed locations of these activities and then work out the details of the license agreement in terms of our responsibilities or restoration and things of that nature was to kind of follow up once we get an idea of what your, your flavor is for which area you think is, is most impactful to the town.
Do you have a preference?
Um-
What makes it easier for you?
Yeah, I think, I think they're, they're both-
Faster.
They're both pretty similar. They're both, they're both capable of holding the pipe, they're both capable of pulling it out. It's really where do we want to store that pipe? Um, and it, we had done more thought on the, on the bike path and then, you know, on the, on the walkthrough, the town kind of asked us, hey, what about the park? Can we kind of weigh the pros and cons of both of those options? And that's what we tried to do, but I think they're both doable. It's not, when, really it's the pipe sitting there just not, not doing anything, right? For the majority of this time, you fuse it out and that's one week of impact, um, and then it sits there and then you, and you pull one out and then you pull the other out. And those take about half a day to pull it into configuration.
I mean, my concern is, you know, a kid's riding his bike on the bike path and goes, falls off and goes crashing into your pipe. I mean, that, that could be pretty significant. Not for anything you did.
I completely understand the concerns and, and again, I, I think if, if the, if you guys prefer the bike path, I'd probably bring in a, a professional traffic engineer and have him examine that. I've already had conversations with one. Before I released him, I just wanted to make sure.
And how confident are you that, you know, the four to eight weeks is really, you know, a realistic schedule? I mean, have you studied the, the soil? I mean, you know, geology, all that stuff?
We've made coins on the soil, we've done a ton of test pits, um, we've, we've seen what the water table is, uh, we've seen what the soil is where we could along the path and it seems like it's acceptable to an HDD. I will tell you, because I'm, I'm not going to sit here and, and lie, any trenchless crossing can have problems. They, they shouldn't, but they can. Uh, you don't know exactly what's under there. For example, we just did in, in Woburn and we completed it HDD one, um, which was on Lake Ave. And underneath, there was, there were some boulders and we had to pull back and kind of work our way through and we did that, but it probably cost us a week. Um, again, if it goes smooth, we try and give conservative numbers, so maybe we could beat those numbers, but, um, you know, the confidence level on a, on a trenchless crossing is, it's as high as it's going to be for me, but they're never, it's never going to be at a hundred percent just because I can't tell you exactly what's under the ground. It does, we did all the pre-work we possibly could do, working with, uh, geo engineers, which is an engineering firm that specializes in this, doing boulders, doing test pits, to make sure that it seems like this is the most feasible option to get under there.
Okay.
Uh, just to point out, you know, the intention that, because I didn't mention it before, was to put in, you know, the safety cones in this area right here where the pipe is closest and then the length of the pipe to put, you know, reflective tape on it just to help make sure it's as visible as possible.
So, I'll just speak as the town engineer for the moment. Um, both options, I think, are achievable from a safety perspective. I just think Davidson Park is the better option. I know, um, and I see David Miller here, I know the Concom has some concerns about use of the park, but if there was a way that we're able to, um, alleviate their concerns, I think it would be the best situation so that on a very busy summer season, we don't have, you know, seven hundred and fifty length of pipe laying out on our, on our bike path that people are going to be using all summer. So, um, that's my recommendation. I think they are meeting with the Conservation Commission, I think, on June thirteenth. So, um, I'm sure there'll be more conversations with the commission at that time. And then the idea is that for either option, if the commission was to, you know, to be okay with the Davidson Park option, we'll work with our legal counsel to put together a license agreement for the board to, um, evaluate on whichever one is, um, kind of the, you know. I, I think if Davidson Park is, is, if the commission allows the use of Davidson Park, I think that's the, for, to me, unless I hear otherwise from you, I think that's the better scenario.
So, we don't meet again until the twenty-sixth? You said you want to start June twentieth, right?
We'd, I, ideally like to start around that's a, June twentieth, which is a Monday. Certainly, we, we would never start, well, it's-
But your drillers aren't starting until July tenth, so there's some time-
Exactly.
With the, June twenty-sixth, I don't think it screws up your schedule.
You know, as we proceeded with our discussion to which location was best, that before we would use either of the, the facilities, we'd make sure that we had a license agreement in place and we have a little bit of time if we're not starting until June ten, which gets us to even to the Ju- June, or July ten, to the, to the, uh, June twenty-sixth meeting to formalize that agreement and, and certainly get executed.
And I think there is, there is work you can do without having a fused pipe on the park. If, and I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't undertake anything to offend, um, you know, the board. But, you, you know, we could do the utility relocations and if all of a sudden everyone says no, we just put the utilities back to where they were and it wouldn't be, and that would be prep work and we could potentially do while we're waiting to see if this gets finalized on the twenty-sixth to try and maintain schedule. But again, we wouldn't do that, uh, without the okay of everyone in this room.
I mean, these are our only two options, right? We have to pick one if the project's going to go forward, so.
Getting to that point, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I would just say it would be helpful, I think, for, um, our environmental representative in his dealing with the conservation commission to have, to be able to make a representation to the board what they prefer to, to take place. So, if it's Davidson Park, the board make a recommendation that he could use that in, in presenting that to the conservation mission. So, there's no misunderstanding on, you know, what your preference is. Thoughts?
I was going to say, I'm a fan of Davidson Park, more space to lay out. I think it's an area easier, barricaded, away from kids and just to attract nuisance standpoint. So, if we can do something with, um, the environmental groups to get them comfortable, that'd be my vote.
Yeah, I, and, and I agree with what, what John said and what Beth said from a public safety perspective. Davidson Park is absolutely a better option. Um, that bike path, you can kind of see the twists and turns there, but, you know, there's not, it's shady, there's not a whole lot of visibility. I, I think it's, it's very risky.
What happens at night?
I would also point out, you know, we-
When a kid's riding his bike at night, I mean, you got a little headlight, but like, you know, your park, you, you-
Yeah, we're going to put reflective tape on everything and then put a barrier up around it, but I understand what your, the concerns are, I, I do.
And we looked at along sort of pulling this up and possibly getting stretched out another section of the, of the, this off the bike path, which we, well off the bike path. But because of the shape of the bike path, there's compound curves, there's still a possible way to get the pipe to bend that much to get it anywhere away from this area.
Okay. Anyone else?
Is there, just out of curiosity, is there any concern with like, you know, we're kind of hoping that it is not as wet a summer as it was two years ago? But, um, like standing water or if there's like a lot of rain or anything with, with the pipe there? Because I, I mean, I know there's a, a spot there that makes a really nice puddle for jumping in. Um, and Davidson does get soggy in places.
Yeah, I mean, there's no concern on our end. I mean, HDD pipe is kind of that standard, uh, plastic pipe. It's, it's got, this has a thick diameter, but it's, it's used to hold water. I mean, if it flooded, it wouldn't, it would kill the pipe.
It's plastic, so it can't rust.
Swab through there and clean it out for, to, you know, keep the resource happy, but that would be really it. And we could also, now that I'm saying it, we, if we needed to, we could plug the ends, although I wouldn't want it to float away.
I think you're more concerned about it blocking drainage.
Because we wouldn't want it to float in a flood, that we wanted to stay there and just remain in its place.
Yeah, it, it's just like in, I, I'm in particular thinking on the bike path there, there's some areas where you get these, like, it rains a lot, some big puddles, so just-
I walked through the area on, on Saturday when it was raining and I took a lot of measurements out there, so I understand what you're saying. Uh, but also the topography is such that I don't think there's, if there was a flood big enough to create that big of a problem over there, it'd be a lot of the problems in town as far as that's concerned because the elevation is such that I think most of that pipe would be out of the area.
Yeah, I saw, I think I saw your measurements on Sunday when I was going through there. Um, I have sort of related comments, but I'll get saving.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, we haven't heard from Conservation Commission yet, um, but, um, uh, Davidson Park seems to be, uh, the lesser of evils on the, um, location here. I think the bike path would, um, would really be a nightmare, um, for us, um, to, to manage and, um, there's, uh, a lot of risk there. Uh, on the other hand, I mean, I think that there is a likelihood that this is going to do some damage to that park. And, um, you know, we want to make sure that it's, um, returned, you know, really better than it, than it was, um, if, if we're using that for a lay-down area and for storage. Um, my, um, big concern from when we started this project and I know there were a lot of residents saying that there was no chance that jack and bore was going to happen here and, you know, that we're going to end up doing the, um, HDD. So, um, so here we are, right? And, um, my concern is that, um, with just the project in general, we're not, we're not giving a lot back to this neighborhood and we're not, um, uh, uh, and we're taking quite a bit, right? This is going to be an area that is just, as Rich was saying, uh, just covered with kids walking and it is a major access point in this community. And especially the, the bike path now has, you know, it, it's really drawn a lot of kids to use that as the kind of central artery to safely get to the town center. So, it's, it's not just what's in that area. I mean, that is the hub of kids and their summer, right? So, um, we're going to be taking that away to a certain degree and I understand, you know, we, we have to do this and, um, um, and I appreciate the, the effort, um, that you guys have put in place to find alternative options and to keep the process moving. Um, when we first started this, one of our targets, um, was to give the, the kids something back, right? So, uh, and I don't see that we've done that. Um, so I'd like to see us visit as part of an amendment here, uh, investment in the playground at Leonard Park. Um, and I, I know there's been some, uh, 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 an indication from every source that you guys want to do just improvements that are right along the pathway here. Um, but I think that this has really expanded out and now we're in the territory for amending, you know, our license agreement. Um, I think we need to, we need to deliver a project, you know, that is, um, going to, um, at, at least make things a little bit better for, for that community in that neighborhood there, so. Um, and, you know, uh, I, I don't, I'm not talking millions of dollars here, but, uh, and I see that you've put, um, you know, a, uh, an offer there and an amendment that, um, I, I think is reasonable. I think, um, it's got to be more for what we're doing here. We're happy to work with you, we're happy to do whatever, but, um, it, it's, it's a lot at this point. Um, and, uh, and I think the neighborhood is, um, needs to see that we're, um, we're working together to achieve something for, for at least the kids and the families in that neighborhood because even Davidson Park, um, it doesn't look like it's busy when you're driving by, but, um, it is covered with, um, kids and families having picnics and taking their babies there. And it's, it's, um, um, it's, it's going to be difficult, it's going to, and traffic is going to snarl through there. Even if it's open, um, it's, it's going to be a nightmare. So, uh, I'm happy to consider this. Uh, obviously, we, we have to, but I'd like to see us, um, dig into the details of, um, getting that park back in shape for, um, for kids and, um, starting that work this summer as we're starting the work, um, there. So, that would be my only suggestion to you. Thank you guys for coming in, I appreciate it.
Anything else? I would just respond is that, uh, it is part of our licensing agreement specifically for potential use- I would just respond is that, it was part of our licensing agreement, specifically for potential use of Davidson Park, will address issues of restoration of the park and, and, you know, impacts we might do directly to it as part of this work. So, that was something I intended to work with, Beth.
Yeah, we, we, we know that, I mean, we think, and, and I just wanted to iterate that, you know, I would say that's kinda the baseline for us here, but thanks.
Thank you.
Can I add from a, uh, from a communication, communications perspective? I think I said this last time, I know, like, cross street directed butters are communicated to. What we see somewhere, this is forest, if there is a neighborhood, cross goes up, forest goes this way, which, which really relies on being able to get from heat, from there to everywhere else in Winchester. And there has not been a lot of communication to that neighborhood. So, I think investing in probably a hundred families, and, and investing in, in doing some of the same communications that go to the folks who are living in this sort of cross street, cross to Washington, to, yeah, behind the vet, like, forest to Brookside.
Brookside and Cross.
They, they also need to be, just as, I mean, it's not gonna be a direct impact in front of their house, but they need to be just as aware that this is gonna impact all of their, their traffic and getting around and getting from, from here to anywhere elsewhere.
You did take your feedback, attach the notifications, so we're expanding it, and we're gonna have it in the streets of that area, based on what you said last time. So, we're gonna do that this weekend, actually.
That's great. The, the other thought, if that's gonna be this weekend, next week, is if there's something that could, we have one more weekly school notice that could go out, so if there is something that could be ready by the end of the week, that could get into the Morocco and the Lynch notices about, we get to the bottom of those emails, and there's just a ton of things, and sometimes I read it, sometimes I don't, but, you know, just, that's one additional place that we could get something before the end of the school year.
Yeah, so if you can get me something by the end of the Thursday, do you think that's enough time to get it in for Monday's notice?
Yeah, it goes usually out Sunday night.
Sunday night, yeah. Thank you.
Any else, Ray? So, Beth, do you need a formal vote or anything at this point?
So, we don't need a vote on this piece of it. We do, we do need a vote on the license agreement amendment. So, this amendment is just for the continued use of Washington Street Park. The idea is that we'd have a totally separate license agreement for whatever we end up, bike path or Davidson Park. But this extension is just for Washington Street Park.
Any questions on that, losing your packet? So, I think to Mike's point, you know, we will be negotiating something in the license agreement to use Davidson Park for the bike path, right? Is that what you're thinking, Mike?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's fair to, to say that we, we expect that there was gonna be additional compensation needed for our activities in either of these two areas, separate from this, because that is something we'd already talked about previously. So, I think we understood that, as far as this other activities. It, it would be helpful if, if you folks could maybe, you know, present something that you think would be reasonable. You know, because from that perspective, what we'd rather do is included in terms of money, as opposed to a specific task of, like you said, playground, something along those lines, it becomes difficult for us to undertake.
Oh, yeah, no, we know, we know that that's, that's not in, in your lane, that's in ours, since we have a pretty good idea what those, those costs are. And like I said, I mean, I think it's, it, it will be good that we all, you know, work on that, that effort together and invest in it and deliver something that's worthwhile to the neighborhood, so, and certainly, you know, beyond the, the compensation that we agreed to for the amendment here, I'm, you know, happy to take donations from McCord or anyone that is, you know, willing to, to deliver a project there. It's, it's a good public service, I think, as well, to the community where you guys have been doing a lot of work and will continue to, so we appreciate it.
Alright, so is everyone okay with this license agreement?
Yes.
So, is there a motion for that?
Move, we authorize the amendment of the license agreement extended through November-
Actually, January, did we say January? Sorry?
January, well, that's, that's beyond that. Yeah, I think the final revision identified January fifteenth.
January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and author is the town manager to sign on the town's behalf.
Second?
Yeah, so, just for some discussion, if I may, Rich?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, so this is where, happy to support this into January if we need to, but I think as far as the, that kinda compensation piece, I think maybe that's where we can agree to have a, have a conversation of what that's going to look like as part of the disagreement, as well as the Davidson Park agreement, and put something together, if that, if that sounds good to you guys.
I guess I'm a little confused.
Yep.
The, we had talked about the, the compensation as part of the, the amendment, which is fifty thousand dollars, essentially five thousand dollars a month. So, I guess I was hopeful we could get this, you know, signed in this format, and then the other compensation potentially for using Davidson Park, for example, would be included in this other license agreement specifically. And we can work through those details going forward.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I think fifty thousand dollars is fine, and I don't know what it's going to, or, 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 you know, what we're gonna be able to deliver with that amount of money. I think with both impacts to that neighborhood, I'd like to discuss something a little bit more holistically that we can deliver as a final project. So, it's, it's fine, I mean, as to, I would just, just amend that to, you know, to indicate that we'll discuss consideration, you know, and, you know, in the future meeting, right? So, cause we're gonna have to do the other piece of it. So, that, that would be my only suggestion, if that makes sense.
So, I think they're, they're looking, there's two licenses agreements, right?
Right.
So, you know, I think this one, you know, we're continuing on the same path that we've kind of been on with them on this one.
Yep.
And then we have the opportunity with the Davidson Park one to kinda ask for the compensation you're talking about. So, I, I just don't wanna-
I'm just talking about both, I mean, I don't know what the compensation level is for the Davidson Park, you know, impact. But, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that with both of these agreements, that we have a sum of money that can support a project for the neighborhood, rather than just money that goes into the general fund that disappears, you know? So, that, that's, that's my focus and my goal. So, that's, that's why just the five thousand dollars a month is not, you know, not ideal from where I'm standing at this point. But, and I'm just seeing it for the first time, right? We haven't been talking about this, never really negotiated it, so.
So, Beth, we earmark money for a specific project?
So, the, the MOU has money that's earmarked, that's going towards traffic improvement in the Washington and cross street corridor. So, that goes into, comes in, we voted at town meeting, we just did it this spring, and then it goes into a dedicated account. The way this is currently written, it would be a general fund receipt. So, it could be, you could go to town meeting and say, we receive fifty thousand dollars for every source we want, you know, you put a warrant article on and say, we wanna allocate it towards whatever, XYZ.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I would prefer both sums that we, you know, are, you know, are earmarked for a project that we can deliver, that we've identified. So, I mean, that's a little bit more work on our side, and we can certainly make that, we can still approve this agreement and, and have that conversation. And are you guys coming back in here at some point?
I would think we'd be back on the twenty-sixth, right?
Yeah, that's good, we can approve this, and we can still, you know, I don't think it's a question of consideration on our point, but.
Yeah, I just don't know how we would approve it.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be linkage, like, there's a discussion, but there's no linkage, like, we approved this one for fifty thousand dollars. And we, my concern is, we have requested for a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, money for a truck, right? So, this money's gonna go into the general fund, and it goes to town meeting, you know, it can't be necessarily designated towards this, we have to keep that in mind, like, do you know what I'm saying? We, we can't just take this and stick it in a box and say, okay, here's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. We all agree, the, the playground at Leonard needs to be approved, I, I'm there with you on that, a hundred percent, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I, I think we can, though, I think we can. I mean, I think that we can, you know, agree to earmark those funds and-
Where's Stacy?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, no, we just have to go to a town meeting, we can-
We just have to go to a town meeting, I mean, to, I mean, again, I mean, money just goes into the general fund and just gets, you know, put to something else that has, you know, potentially nothing to do with the neighborhood, right? So, I just wanna make sure that it's, you know.
So, I'm hearing you, so if that's your pleasure, then we shouldn't take any action on this license agreement tonight, and we should come back on the twenty-sixth and have-
Yeah, except that I, what I'm hearing, though, is that they need to start on the twentieth, is that right?
This is for Washington-
It's a different project.
This is the Washington Street Park across from-
They're already using-
They're already using it, so they've been, they were supposed to be out of there a year ago.
Right.
Say, six months ago, right, when the work at-
When the work that was associated with Washington Street, because the activities were, were specified as Washington Street.
It's in all of our best interests to let them continue to use that space, it's already-
Torn up?
I don't wanna say a mess, cause you're actually, it's, as lay down areas go, it actually looks pretty good, so, I appreciate that. But, and it helps them get their project on quicker, which I think is a benefit to all of us. In the original license agreement, they are required to install irrigation, I think sod and some trees. So, this compensation is in addition to the previously negotiated restoration activities out there.
Yeah, yeah, all those requirements were, were staying the same.
And the previous fee that they paid?
There, there was no fee originally, it was, it was restoration activities with the irrigation and the trees were the, what we got in lieu of a fee.
It's vision money, for a down payment.
Yeah, fifty thousand, yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah, but I mean, it's, we, we don't know what an actual project is going to cost to get done, you know, that we need to. So, I would say certainly wait till the, the twenty-sixth, if, if we can. I mean, luckily, we'll be, we'll be right back in here, and they'll be here anyway, so. I mean, that would be my preference instead, to get a recommendation from management on what full compensation would be for the neighborhood. So, because it, it may be, it may be necessary that it's, it's more than that, right? So, I don't wanna just approve fifty here and then fifty there, if it's, you know, one, one fifty for the whole thing. So, that's why I, in my head, the, the projects are, are linked, so that would be our-
So, I think we should take no action on this.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be my recommendation, but in the meantime, I guess we would ask management to come with a recommendation, happy to help and happy to discuss it. And as I said before, you know, I, the project needs to move forward, and I don't wanna get in your way, but to the degree that we can't wait on these pieces, then it makes sense for the, I think we're, I think we're at that point with the neighborhood, to be honest with you, that we gotta deliver something.
So, I think there was a-
Is everyone okay with that?
A motion, and I don't know if it was seconded, Patty?
If, there was, Anthony needed Michelle, seconded.
But then there was discussion.
Yeah.
Do you still wanna go forward?
Okay, we rescind our motion, what's the protocol?
Yeah, you can rescind your motion.
Yeah, I, I think we can wait on that and remove, remove the motion.
You can all vote get, vote no. That's all you have to do, is say no, and then so it's, it doesn't pass.
I think rescinding is fine, that works, yeah, so, and we don't wanna send the message that we don't support the project, so.
We're not taking any comments about all this, gotta keep moving. Uh, okay, alright, so that's-
Could I, could I just perhaps just say, from our perspectives, it's, it's two distinct different areas, and it's kind of a-
I understand that, and I get what you're saying, but here's our problem, where we sit, okay? I'm just gonna level with you right now, cause it's getting late, alright? We have a neighborhood that's been torn up, and all we hear about, you know, daily, despite your best efforts, is how, you know, this is a construction zone, okay? And now you wanna, at, you know, our busiest area, where our most active families play, okay? You wanna tear it up and you wanna do this big project, and I get it, you have to do it, alright? We have, our hands are tied, you have, you, you have the ability to do it, okay? You gotta deliver something back to the neighborhood, besides, you know, crummy streets that are all chewed up for the next year, okay? And directional drilling for a summer, alright? So, whether it's restoration, whether it's a new playground, something, the, the neighborhood needs something. Cause they've put up with this for the better part, how long are we going on? A year at this point, a year and a half, two years? I don't know, I lost count.
Yeah.
And it's frustrating, I mean, I, look, I live on the other side of town, but I was there today, cause my daughter has gymnastics, I gotta pick her up. And, you know, I get caught, you know, in the traffic, and, you know, the Lake Street stuff, and then I'm trying to figure out how to get back so I can make my meeting tonight. So, it's, you know, you go from one area to the next to get across town, from, you know, Cross Street to Lake Ave, you know, it's, you know, we got a bridge that's gonna be closed on the other side of town, if you haven't heard. So, you know, it's frustrating for these neighbors, and, I mean, you live there, you live in that area. Uh, it's, you gotta deliver something back, so, maybe two distinct areas, but it's, as Mike says, it's kind of one whole project. And I think it's a good recommendation on his part, I mean, I really do.
And what we hear from the neighbors is, you know, they're not too psyched about just improvements to the sidewalks and things like that. And they tell us, well, that's what you guys should be doing anyway, right? So, I mean, there's not, they don't see a benefit for what the burden is on them for, you know, for the childhood of, you know, a lot of these kids. And so, so we appreciate your patience, but we're committed to get it done, and we will be committed to being reasonable as well. So, as I said, we're, we're not gonna try to shake you down here, so we just wanna put something together.
Say anything else on this?
I don't think so.
Alright, let's see you on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, Liz Solar. What was summer? Who put this agenda together?
I know.
Alright, so, we all met on the twenty-second with the joint meeting with the school committee, we all, you know, heard the pitch then. There's been some documents that have come in late, today even, there's been some emails. So, where we sit is, you know, is it a direct purchase or a PPA for these solar panels on the Lynch project? And, you know, there's some talk that we're out of time, and then there's others who think there's more time, or there's something creative we can do. What, what we know at this point is, you know, we had our town council look into whether we could use ARPA money to fund a direct purchase. And it's come back, the analysis that Liz did, and Jay, if you have anything to add, please jump in, is that it doesn't qualify, and ARPA money cannot be used for that purpose. So, we know that. Everything else, you know, I'm not sure, you know, we, we have all the information, or where we, it just depends, I guess, who you talk to. So, it's a little frustrating, it's a little frustrating that it's May, and that, you know, we've had people from the EFPBC and people close to the project say that we have an end of June deadline, because I think this was important to some board members and, and to the public. And so, it feels, you know, doesn't feel good that, you know, the clock may have run out, so. You know, but the idea is that we need to give some direction, or put us on a path towards some direction in order to, to go to the next step. We know that apparently a ninety percent design is due at the end of July. We know, and Meg was here the last meeting, that they're gonna go out to bid in September on the project. So, you know, if we're, they'd like to have as part of the design, what we're doing with these solar panels. And from there, there's an abundance of information out there, you know, lots of questions, some answers. But, you know, at this point, we should engage in a discussion and see where everyone is with this decision. From a sustainability standpoint, in Ken's ear, we achieve the net zero either way, whether we lease the panels or we buy them. It's just, you know, what's in the best interest for the town financially. So, with that said, I'll open the floor for any discussion.
So, we have, do we need a decision by the end of this month, Miss? It's a binary answer.
I agree with you, it's a binary, yeah, I agree, but good luck getting an answer.
Okay, so, we just, we got an answer two weeks ago, it said, in June, has something changed?
Apparently, well, I don't know if anything's changed.
So, if nothing's changed, and we don't have a defined funding source to buy them, I mean, I, I think buying is a great idea. But do we have the funding sources defined?
So, I guess there is one path where we could start out with a direct purchase, we go to town meeting, town meeting doesn't approve it, then we need to pivot to a PPA, right?
Right.
The issue with that is, the design, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the design money, from what I understand, the design money isn't built into the project for that.
Right.
So, we have to spend, and I think the estimate that came in late today from Jay Nardone was a hundred seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand dollars extra in design money. So, you gotta factor that in, cause we don't, and we don't have funding source for that right now. So, where's that money come from to do the design?
So, doesn't this seem like a helter-skelter plan at the last minute, or is it, or not?
So I think what happened here, it feels like last minute is because we got information about the Inflation Reduction Act in April, right, towards the end of April, that there would be, you know, thirty percent incentives for doing something like this, right? So, you know, it's what we do all the time, right? We're, not everything is lined up perfectly. And sometimes we gotta run around like crazy when we see that there's federal or state money that's available that we can bring to the community. And so I think that's why that, why this kind of changed. And I disagree on the determination of whether we can use ARPA. There are hundreds of communities around the country that are using ARPA for exactly this. So there was a clarification and some guidance from the Treasury on this, which, you know, approves ARPA. So I, I think that that would be.
Did you share with Jay?
The what?
Did you share that with Jay?
I, I didn't. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's my sense and I, I mean, I can.
You should.
Projects all over the place that do it. But, but with that said.
No, I have to, we have to rely on him. He's our town council, right?
I understand.
No, I'm saying, but if you have new information, then we should share with him and maybe change his opinion. We should change my opinion.
Oh, yeah, right. I mean, I think that's why, you know, everything is, is all, I just got this, you know, the notification about their decision, right? So on Friday night, I was busy, you know, my daughter graduated, so I was over there, so I didn't have time to call Jay and bust his chops about that. So, but happy, you know, happy to keep the conversation going. But, and I would put that in the category though of even if, and we know that how we've used ARPA in the past and how all communities in the country are using it. Sometimes there's not direct alignment with your project. And so maybe you say, hey, we're gonna use ARPA for a project that's in the capital queue. And then that, that money then goes for the purchase of the panels or whatever it is, right? So we, you know, we don't stop and we just say, oh, hey, there's, there's a little bump in the road here. We gotta keep forging forward. Granted, I think the timeline is, from what I understand, is it, it's a little bit more expansive than we thought. We would need to go to town meeting, I would think, for a, either for a borrowing or for, you know, some other funding source. But I think, think if ARPA is there, you know, it's, this is a, this is an investment that makes, it's the best, we know it's the best outcome, you know? And we've heard that from the EFPBC and Sustainability Subcommittee and from our Sustainability Director. So we know that it's best outcome. And I, I think we just need to spend, you know, a little bit of time, just kind of try and hit that target. So we, so we know that if it doesn't work, you know, that we can say a year from now, this is why we went PPA and not, not missing out on these great opportunities.
Mike, when you say ARPA, are you saying to use, because we gotta come up with about, I estimate, three point two million, maybe three point three if there's design money involved. So are you saying to use all the ARPA money to fund this?
No, I mean, I'm saying that at, at least we can use the design, you know, money for, for the, for the panels, right? That's what we're looking for in the, in the short term.
So then we would need to come up with, so what would be the, so what would be? So the only way I see this financially making sense for the town is if we pay upfront. If we borrow the money, then the interest, you know, negates all of the, I mean, by the way, I'll say potentially making, you know, saving the town money. I think if we borrow the money, you know, the interest is calculated at one point one million.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily say that we, I think we gotta look at some options. I wouldn't say borrow the entire amount. I'm just saying in the short term, if we need design engineering and we need to do that, I think that we have those funds that are available to us that, that we can use. And you said they were a hundred thousand or something, a hundred fifty thousand. I, I don't have that number in front of me, but, and then I would.
Estimate one seventy, one hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand dollars for, so we would design a project that may never see the light of day?
Well, we, I thought we had a policy that we wouldn't spend design money if we didn't have a funding source.
But I thought, right?
Capital has that policy.
Yeah, yeah. But, but we have, we've, we've done that. I mean, if you look at the list of ARPA, we've funded design engineering of the windows, the library, stuff at town hall. We've been doing, we've been doing that, so.
I thought those were feasibility, which is different than design.
I, I think we, I think we consider them all the same as if we don't, if we don't have the, if we don't have a funding source to pay for the, for the project. But I think we do here and the backup is the PPA, right? So I, I think it's, there's so much revenue that is available to the town for this project and federal credits. I don't know how we can't investigate options and it may be some free, from some free cash, some ARPA, some, you know, other sources. I don't know. Some bought, maybe some borrowed.
I agree with all that. I just didn't see, I need to see articulated plan and a timeline.
Yeah.
That so we don't, so we get Lynch built on time because that's the most important thing to do, right?
Yeah, I don't think this is, this is gonna stop that, right?
Well, there's a structural component to it, so it wouldn't slow it down.
That's what I don't understand though. Either we're renting and putting the panels there or we're purchasing and putting the panels there. So I'm not clear on why something would be different in the design of the roof of Lynch.
Because in, in the direct ownership, we are designing it and bidding it as part of the project, which is why we have the shortened timeline. And the PPA, you're, and Ken, you can correct me, you're contracting out to a separate company who's doing the design and installation.
So, right, but so.
It's the same roof.
This is the same roof, right? Project wise, you're designing the same roof. I understand. So you're, we're designing.
Different designers.
Solar piece for it is that.
We would be designing, under the direct ownership, our consultant would be designing the solar as part of the whole bid package.
Right.
Under the PPA, they would be designing a roof and then somebody would be coming in separately and designing that system.
So the.
Is that, is that, I'm sorry, there's costs built into the project now on that?
I don't know the answer to that question. My, I mean, just the information I got today was that they don't have the cost of the direct, they don't have the cost of the design for the direct ownership built into the project. So that was the email we received today is that the estimate, like you said, the hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand.
But it does include what was discussed of like building, of designing the roof in a way that it would accommodate solar. That would be part of the design whether we rent or own.
I would assume so, but I'm not a.
My understanding is that the project had about eight hundred thousand dollars built into the project to put the structural supports into the building itself. So your discussion is beyond that, but the building is engineered to.
Carry that load, right? That's what Chris explained, yeah. Keep going, then I'll go.
Look, it's, it is, seems to be the right decision to purchase them. But how we would do that and how we would do anything within this timeline if it has to be done and made a decision in June is, is challenging. And I guess my question would be if it's PPA, that's a school committee decision. So if we don't, not if we intentionally don't make a decision, but if we're trying to figure out, is, is this something that can be purchased? How do we figure this out? What do we do? What's the school committee going to be, are they going to be compelled to go for the PPA? Because we need to move ahead and we're not sort of slowing down any other decision.
I don't really answer.
I don't really answer that either.
I don't think, I mean, I'm sure they could take a contingent vote that, you know.
I suppose.
Direct purchase doesn't happen. I mean, if, look, if they could take a PPA vote and then I assume, you know, if they're willing to lease the property, use the property for leasing purposes, I would assume they would, you know, be just as fine with, you know, a direct purchase.
Yeah, keep in mind, I mean, we are, there is five thousand square feet of direct purchase solar that is going on this building anyway, right? So, you know, we would, if we did a PPA, we would have some, you know, a hybrid system there, right? Which would, you know, I, I would say would, would not be ideal for us as well. I mean, five thousand square feet of solar is a lot. And it's intended to be a lot to, you know, make sure that we get to net zero, so.
So when do we, when do we get the tax rebate, Ken, of the thirty percent? Does that come off the price of the panels? Does that, is it reimbursement after the fact? So I'm just trying to figure out, is it three point one, three point two, or is it three point one minus thirty percent?
No, that's calculated into the, that's calculated into their analysis, right?
It is calculated in there. We would receive it, the rebate comes in once the system is operational.
Okay.
And it's thirty percent of the entire project cost.
So they're, in this table, they have a project cost before ITC is three point one five million.
Right.
So then we're gonna get thirty percent back on that.
Yeah, but then that's built into the payback period, ROI.
Okay, so it's already built into the one point five three million that they calculate we're getting back after twenty-five years. So just based on this information we got from, from Zapotec at the last meeting, if you kind of break down the three scenarios, say option one's the PPA, the total savings after twenty-five years is approximately four hundred and sixty-one thousand. That assumes a discounted electricity of fifteen percent, which I think is just an assumption, right? That's negot, that would be negotiated as part of the pilot agreement. Option two, if you had direct ownership that we were able to fund outright with cash, the savings after twenty-five years would be approximately one point five four million dollars. If we went a direct ownership, but we had to finance it over fifteen years, the total savings after twenty-five years is four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So if we have to finance it, there's really but no additional savings over the PPA.
No, the savings is we're not paying for energy for all those years. I think we, there's.
Well, the payback year is year eighteen, so you don't start getting money until year eighteen.
But we, we still aren't paying outlay to purchase the energy that our buildings are generating on our roof. We're buying back every year through a PPA. And we have some savings at the end, right? But we're still outlaying money for energy that our building's generating versus capturing the energy and not paying for it other than paying down the bond for having borrowed it or whatever financing mechanism we use. I feel like that's the decision is we lease it and get a payment from a third party vendor and we get, and we purchase our own energy back every year versus we consume our own energy and pay off the loan. So I feel like the payback is every year we're getting benefit by not paying for energy. And at the end of seventeen years, we might get.
Well, I guess it's a question, I don't know how Zapotec calculates that in this analysis.
Yeah, I mean, the, so if you're, if you own the system and you're producing your full usage per year, which is the way this would be designed, you'd have zero electricity bills for the entire time. If under the PPA model, you are essentially paying for electricity, but at a fifteen percent discount.
Paying nothing, paying something less than what we would pay without it. I mean, to me, that, to me, that's the bottom line discussion and decision. So I, I mean, if it's like twenty-five cents on the dollar, that's great. But it's twenty-five cents we wouldn't have to pay if we owned the panels. And it's more like sixty-five cents on the dollar, right?
How do we get there?
Yeah, and I think it could be some combination of using ARPA, using some free cash. I mean, I would say, you know, let's reduce that initial investment in the direct purchase. And, and there could be money left over in the project that we can apply to it as, as well as add alternate on the backend. I mean, I think there's, there's options here. And I think to Michelle's point. And I remember, you know, having this conversation when we were looking at the high school and the finance committee and you probably chair at that point, I think.
I was probably, no.
And, and, you know, it was this whole question of lead certification at that point. And, you know, and how much we were going to invest in the efforts to have it be lead silver or platinum or whatever it was. And FinCom was initially, you know, very opposed to the idea. And then it came down to numbers saying, hey, we're reducing our operating costs over the period of the building. And then everyone was like, oh, okay, that makes sense. Let's do it, you know? So I feel like we're, we're kind of back at that same point with reducing our ongoing operating costs for, for the, the building and, and, you know, and producing solar, you know, and, you know, keeping those funds for ourselves. And if we do have ARPA, we do have project money, we do have benefits through the Inflation Reduction Act. I mean, it seems, seems, seems like an opportunity for us that we.
So first of all, I'm just gonna, I hate the idea of using ARPA for this project. We're spending ninety-two million dollars on this school project. It is crippling our municipal side, okay? We have a laundry list of playgrounds that are deemed unsafe. You're gonna hear in a couple of minutes that we've lost a truck that is vital to the operation of the DPW. We have municipal buildings that need attention. I'll be perfectly honest to our friends at the school committee and school department is, I'm not very key. We have other school projects that we're considering using ARPA money for roofs and school playgrounds themselves. So, you know, I hate the idea of, you know, taking, you know, what little money we may have to do municipal work and putting it towards this massive project that we have a funding source that for some reason, you know, this wasn't contemplated or included in or thought out. And so now we've got to come up with additional money to fund this. So the only way we do that is we borrow or we use free cash. And that's gonna further affect the municipal side. We're very good at doing school projects. We're very bad at doing everything else. And that's my opinion and I'll stick to it.
Well, Rich, I agree with that. Well, I'm not sure I agree with all of that, but I agree with some of that. However, the energy costs that we pay or don't pay is still municipal. So the benefit on the operation, we pay the heat, the lights, the air conditioning, the plowing, the maintenance of those school buildings on the municipal side as it is. So we are still saving, you know, monthly energy costs on the municipal budget. I get the infrastructure.
I mean, we have none, none of that, that analysis has not been completely, do you think?
Yeah, it's free versus something, though.
So what is the something?
I don't know, but it's more than zero.
Yeah.
And it's, and that, whatever that number is, it's coming out of the municipal energy budget. The schools don't pay their energy. So we're gonna be paying energy in that building via PPA or are we gonna be paying that energy? Like, we're paying the energy anyway.
But we're paying it as during the life of the school rather than coming up with the upfront money.
So it doesn't, it doesn't say it in this.
That's an operating budget issue. I mean, we're talking about taking, you know, capital expenses here.
It doesn't say it in this table, but I have to assume that the energy savings are accounted for in the ROI on the direct purchase. Because if, if not, then what, what are the savings?
That's what I don't know, right? And similarly with the direct ownership with the bond, I.
I have to agree with you on that too.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I think that we need more information. I mean, I just saw something from Zapotec come in at, you know, the eleventh hour before the meeting. And so, I mean, I think there's a pathway here for us to put together, you know, a plan for direct purchase and, and see if it works. And then, you know, when we come back, we, you know, at our next meeting, we can take a look at it, have more information.
So who's gonna put that plan together and when are we gonna do it?
Well, we've got a couple of weeks. Ken volunteered to do it. But no, I think it's, you know, something that we put together with, with staff and we, and the EFPBC and we start getting, you know, some real numbers together and what it would look like. So we're not all just picking out things from the, from the side, so.
What staff? Beth and Mark and our town management staff?
If they don't want to do it, then I, you know, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think this is.
I don't think it's not a question of wanting, it's a question of bandwidth. I mean, they've spent a number of, I mean, Beth, I don't speak for you. You've spent a number of hours on this and have we gotten anywhere?
I work for the board. If you tell me that you want me to do something, I will, it happens.
I mean, I just, I mean, this must come, this has to come from the EFPBC. And to some extent, right? I mean, they're the gatekeeper of all this information. And we can't get Zapotec to come into a meeting. I mean, by the way, is Zapotec a reputable company? I mean, what do we know about Zapotec? I mean, how do we find them? I mean, what?
Yeah, I hadn't heard of them before this project, but since then, when I've asked around, they are pretty well known and well respected, so.
That's good to know.
Yeah. Helpful.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think that, you know, part of our, so we're always going to have capital needs and there's always capital needs that are gonna come up at the last minute if there's a truck that fails. I mean, we've had this with fire trucks before and we've had this with things that we've planned to last longer than they do. And that's part of our, our budgeting process. You know, I think, you know, part of the bigger concern is that, and I mentioned this before, that we envisioned a, a strategy with ARPA and now it's just turned into something every, every meeting comes up on our agenda to approve that, you know, we, feels like that we have no choice and there's no strategy there. I think using some funds to defray the cost of direct purchase, like other communities have done around the country, it, it's, it's a strategy that will allow us to, to reap benefits, not just for, you know, the short term, but for the long term for a building. And we'll know when we look at Morocco in a few years, if this is a, if this is something that we should do. And maybe we should start looking at investing and buying back the PPAs on our other buildings as well. Maybe there's that much benefit. But it's, it's, it's worthwhile. We're not the first ones to be doing direct purchase. And it was the, as, as we heard, it's just really a financial decision because. it's, it's just really a financial decision because we heard this was the best option.
Well, town council has weighed in that we can't use ARPA money. So Jay, I don't know if you guys want to go back and take a look at that, but
We looked at it so, so many different ways. I mean, with a sincere goal to get you there. And then we even looked at anecdotal stuff to see if anyone maybe did it by getting more creative than us. We just couldn't find many good examples out there, Mike. I'm interested in seeing what you see.
Sure, yeah.
We searched, we looked, we researched, we tried to link it to the energy efficiency stuff that we see in some of the energy audits. We just couldn't find a direct link under ARPA. Liz does a tremendous amount of ARPA research, we just couldn't get there.
Yeah.
So, send me what you got.
I will.
We'll take a fresh look. Question for lack of trying, Rich, for sure. We really tried to get you guys there.
Yeah, it's, it's not a question of, of, of trying. I think there's just different interpretations of it. And again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't leave it at there. I mean, we've, we've had, we've come to this, you know, issue before and then we've been creative about it. We've looked at a capital project and we use ARPA for those capital expenditures. And then we use the capital for, for the, the project that maybe didn't qualify for ARPA, right? So it's just, we kind of
I don't know a scenario you're talking about with that.
We kind of horse trade a little bit, right? So
What do you, name me a scenario where we've done that.
Yeah, I think that we've always been talking about it.
Name me a scenario where we've done it.
So you, you don't, it's what we've been talking about, especially when we were doing the Swan in Washington project and putting the money there. I mean, that was our, our strategy there, that if we didn't know if, that we could use that, that money, that ARPA money for affordable housing, that we would, you know, we would use it otherwise. So, and, and so, and we've had the conversation with finance committee about this. I think it's been a strategy that we've talked about. I can certainly provide you a list of examples. I don't have them on top of my head, but it's certainly plausible, would you not say, Jay?
I can't say yet. I mean, I, what I'll say is that it's not exactly clear the level of scrutiny that in the postscript that people are applying to ARPA. But I, I can't say that the way the rules are written that I have a link there. I think that people get creative on ARPA all the time. I, we've tried to really toe the line and we've said no a few times on a few things. And, you know, the, the board has begrudgingly said that's too bad. But they didn't go down that road on a few examples where we just couldn't find a link there.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not saying a, a link in the, the guidance or in the legislation. I'm saying the, the link would be a link that we would make. We would find an approved, you know, expense. And I, I think that we even, did we talk about this for the healthcare? I, I forget, we've, we've used this
We actually couldn't get there on that issue. We, we tried and we had to go through one another route. But, yeah, I mean, if you're talking about offsets, that's a different question.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
That's not this question. So, I, I will, like Beth, I, I will do and look at and try and do whatever the board wants me to do.
So what
Look at this in the absence of ARPA money. Pretend that ARPA money ever existed. Will this project stand on its own without ARPA money? No matter how we come up with that, that capital we have to come up with, or we borrow it or we use free cash, whatever is, and then we can think what ARPA second.
Yeah, I, I think it will. I mean, it's, I think we just need to, to, to see the numbers. And what we'd have to look at is, you know, if we either use some free cash or we use another funding source, is if we, if we reduce money and borrow, if that's worthwhile for us to reduce our operating expenses long-term for the building. That, that's so
So how are we gonna get to that analysis in the next two weeks? Is that what someone said by our next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I certainly think that we can, but the other issue is that I think, I don't know that, I don't know that June deadline is, is, is real. Jay had said that today that it wasn't, so I don't know, right?
I don't, I can't make heads or tails. They seem to backtrack on that and then they come back and say, no, it needs to be June. So, I don't know. But how about this, Mike? You seem to be, you know, pretty involved. You seem to, you know, really want to do a direct purchase. So why don't you come back with a plan in two weeks of how we can get this done?
Sure. I mean, I, I certainly would need some staff support to do that. I mean, I'm not a full-time, so, yeah, that's, okay.
Michelle jumped in.
You have done enough.
It would, yeah, I mean, it would
I'll tell you what.
Yeah, it would be helpful to have somebody smart involved, at least, I think so.
I'll be right there with us.
Besides, yeah.
So come back in two weeks with a path forward to consider.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll clarify that that June deadline is real because I saw some emails today saying that it wasn't. But I, I, I agree that there's confusion.
Who do we depend on to tell us the deadline for the design?
Good question.
Is that gonna be Meg? Is that gonna, we just need a spokesperson?
It's the EFPPC.
Right.
Jay? That's Jay.
So Jay, what do you do?
If Jay speaks for the committee, if they've had a conversation, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I don't want to speak for them, but I would
It seems to be, that deadline seemed to be a moving target this weekend.
I think it, I think the difference is whether you want to wrap it into the project or do it as a totally separate project, right? If you want to wrap it into the project, they have to
By June.
Put together, yeah, you have to have it by June. Not, I mean, that's my understanding and I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but based on the information I've seen, unless you want to break it out as a totally separate project and bid it separately, they need information by June so that they can put the plans and specs together to get a bid this fall. And to take it to the MSCI, which I think is the bigger, you know, more hard and fast deadline of, of August. And I think the, the question that I think we need answered is whether those ONM savings are built into this 25-year, the savings after 25 years from Zapotec.
And, yeah, so I think it's that. And when we get the rebate, have we played out that reduced borrowing post-rebate?
Well, and we need Stacy involved in how that, I mean, this is new, right? So I don't know how that works on a municipal finance side.
Part of my concern is there's very little information in this table. There's a lot of background data that fed into this that we've never seen. I've never seen anyway. So we don't know what they're assuming for the cost of electricity and whether that escalates over the 25 years, for example.
I bet it does.
And
That's the cost of energy, right?
Well, I mean, in their assumptions.
Yes.
This is Zapotec, this is the one that came out today or the one that
No, the, the, it came out previously, right.
Right. But yeah, and I, and I think, you know, Zapotec, who was involved in this project initially is, you know, has indicated to us that they, this is not typically how they work and is not, so there, I think it's, it takes them longer to produce, to produce the information that we need, which is really kind of financially based. So I think that's what we've, we've come up with is, you know, too, is it just, it's taking longer to get information, so.
So Ken, can you find out the cases where you don't qualify for 30%? Like, we go and we, we make, we build this based on, essentially we get 30%. And for some reason, is there fine print in there that says if the government doesn't fund it? Because then if we won't buy an insurance card, you shake your head no, but it happens all the time. And so, that'd be like a million-dollar really bad decision.
That would be bad.
Yeah. John's always trying to sell an insurance product, by the way, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, I mean, a lot of things theoretically could happen. I know that, that, I haven't heard anyone opining that that is a real concern at this point.
The program's new, right? So it really hasn't been tested yet.
Yeah, I mean, the investment tax credit, the 30% investment tax credit's been around for a long time. The difference is that it's now set up to be a direct pay if you're a non-taxable entity. So it's really just that aspect of the program that's changed. And yeah, it's, it's brand-new, which is why we're even having this conversation. I, I don't think we'll be having a conversation like this for the next major project that involves solar because we won't be having, you know, well, presumably, knock on wood, we won't have a new, you know, funding mechanism jump into place that's really important to a project halfway through the project design. But yeah, I would, you know, I, I think sort of everyone in the industry is assuming that the 30% direct pay ITC is for real and gonna happen.
Okay.
But, you know, crazy things can happen, so.
All right, so, Mike, in the next two weeks, you're gonna work with staff. And we've got Stacy, the director
And Ken.
And John.
And everybody. Get us a, a proposal of a path forward, you know,
We'll drop it at your house, John.
For direct purchase.
Yep.
All right, moving on. What's next? ARPA? Oh, Washington Swan Street. So, the developer is, the due diligence expires on June 12th and the developer is looking for a little bit more additional time to complete some of the testing or get results back from some of the environmental testing they've been doing, which is their Phase 2 analysis. That will be, Michelle and Tom can help you too, Mike. They, they look for July 31st for us to extend the deadline to. So, does anyone have an issue with that? Questions, discussion? All right, so we're going from July, June 12th.
So Andy, there's two documents. It's the right of, right of entry, right, Jay, and the
Land dispossession.
Yeah, we're here. The right of entry and
Yep, right of entry and license agreement.
Yep.
I'm good.
And these, you guys, they have a list for you guys to sign, so.
Oh, we are signing them, okay. Super. Yep, so I move that we amend the right of entry and license agreement to extend the term of the agreement from June 12th, 2023 to July 31st, 2023 and amend the land disposition agreement to extend the terms of the agreement from June 12th, 2023 to July 31st, 2023.
Same.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chair, now it passes. All right, next up is ARPA. I think Beth just had a general update and then we did have that memo from DPW that came in. I know Bob's been waiting patiently to talk to us, so. If you wanted to say where we're at with all the ARPA
Sure.
Items that we're waiting to come back on.
The date we have allocated about 3.63 million and we have about 3.19 remaining. That includes the, the part allocated, it includes the $300,000 set aside that we discussed for community needs slash projects. And I'm gonna be meeting with the comptroller's office and a couple of the departments to see if some of the projects that you've already authorized that are finished up, if we have any money that we can back into the pot. So hopefully on the 26th, we'll have that number.
Great, the update is good. Appreciate it.
And so, one of that is the health department as well, right?
Yep.
We do expect some money
We'll definitely have some money coming back from there, yep.
Any estimate or is it too early to tell?
No, we're meeting next week, so I'll have a number done, yep.
All right. Any timeline when that, when those design stuff will come back?
Which ones?
All of them. Windows, roofs.
Yeah, so I think the, I had that in my update to the board.
Yep.
Anyway, like end of June, July timeframe for both, for the roofs and the town hall, all library windows. So by, hopefully by, you know, your first meeting in August, we'll have a, a better estimates of what those costs will be going forward.
New wifi at the library by the end of the month?
New wifi.
Who's that, huh?
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Yeah.
All right, so Bob is here. There was an incident with our bucket truck.
There it was, yep.
So Bob, I don't know if you want to explain to the board what happened?
It wasn't one of our finest moments. I'd only been here for two weeks and our foreman who generally drives that truck was on vacation. One of the workers who works with him was driving the truck, doesn't always drive that truck. He'd taken, he'd done some work that morning, left the side street off of Crotch and just made the wrong turn, not thinking, and hit the bridge. So, it destroyed the aerial lift on the truck and because of the age of the truck, it was totaled. So, we only get $40,725 in actual cash value for the truck. And the boom alone we got to replace was $165,000, $167,000. So obviously that didn't work for us. So, it was, we did find a truck that is available in September that's already been purchased by one of our vendors who has a state contract that could be available to us in September. The total in that was $230,550. And if you subtract the actual cash value for, for that truck, it comes to $194,325 with, that's us purchasing the cabin chassis back because the cabin chassis is, is in good shape. It's 22 years old, so, but it's still in good shape. So we'll, we'll use that to refurbish it into a, another use.
So I'll get a lot of questions because I'm really annoyed by this. And are you been here two weeks?
Understandably.
This is just like, this is a disgrace, to say the least, because this takes $190,000 from, we're begging contacts tonight for money for a park.
Sure.
So, was this employee trained to drive this truck?
He is trained to drive a CDL truck, yes.
So he was trained to drive this specific piece of equipment? He was trained in this piece of equipment?
Correct.
So how do you not know the bridge is nine feet and the bucket's 11, 11 and a half feet?
I wish I could answer that question for you. I, I
But you gotta find out, because
I don't think there's an answer to that. He, we've, we've talked to him, he, he just, you know
Did he care? Wasn't paying attention?
I wouldn't say that, he's a good worker. He's a really good worker.
So do, does DPW have a, a practice where every employee's gonna be trained on specific equipment? They're only authorized to drive that equipment?
Correct, they are. So, we, we have put in some changes from that. Some more information inside the trucks so that it's, it's very visible for them to know. More training for it, having a sign out the truck. When you have to sign out the truck, you know, it specifically says what streets you can't, you know, can't go down. Specific people are gonna be assigned to that truck and if they're out, doesn't go out again. We're also looking at a transponder that can be put before and after the bridge and a receiver in the truck so that if you do, for whatever reason, you know, forget it again, it'll put off an alarm in the truck.
So do you, thank you. And, and I'm not holding, holding responsible.
No, 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 I understand. So this, this
Okay, just a couple of questions.
Who did it was, is a very, very good worker.
I'm, I'm sure.
You know, and no one felt worse than him. And I'm, I still don't think he sleeps well at night because of it. But it, it was an accident that happened and it was an unfortunate accident.
So, you, you, all of your equipment has alarms for whether the dump body's down, your backup and so forth. So all, all, all those types of things, but they, they're annoying. They are. So they get disconnected sometimes. Do you, do you have a process?
They're not disconnected.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't say yours were. I just said they are sometimes, because they are. Do you have a process for checking all of your equipment periodically to make sure that all the alarms are functional?
They all get inspected and have to be functioning to get their
Like every quarter or something like that?
Every year, every year.
And all your drivers, you check their MBRs once a year?
Yep.
How often is this truck really needed?
How often?
Yes.
Quite often because the, the number of calls that we get on, on tree requests is amazing in this, in this community.
Is it requests of emergency?
I could put that truck out every single day. Every single day it can go out and trim trees, cut trees down. You know, there's a lot of, it's amazing. You know, different communities I've been in, you know, some are sidewalks, whatever, so far that my time being here, it's trees. You know, trees are the biggest calls we get.
And they use it for other things, right?
Yeah, the lights, all the lights downtown.
Changing the lights at the
Flowers, you know, it gets used for, you know
In field and being able to reach the lights at the field. So it's not just, I mean, it's primarily a, a tree truck.
It's a tree truck.
But it has other uses.
So the question we get from finance committee on this is, do we look at leasing one?
I have not looked at leasing one. Most communities I've ever been in don't particularly like to lease equipment. But, I mean, it's something we can look at.
It comes up on capital every single time, no matter what piece of equipment we're gonna look at.
Yeah, so I mean, I, just in speaking with Mark, because he, you know, has kind of looked at these over the years, it's never been financially makes sense for the town to lease them because the rate at which we can, we can borrow usually is better than what the rate at which you'd lease, like for the VAC truck that was, went to town meeting last year.
It just seems like if we're gonna spend $200,000 or more, then we should know It just seems like if we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars or more, then we should know that's, that's money well spent because to lease it is sixty thousand dollars a year, which probably is, right?
Yeah, and we can only lease for.
For twenty years, or twenty-five years?
We can only lease for three years.
Three years, okay, for three years. But assuming that you annul the lease on, on the piece of equipment, it just seems like.
It'd be helpful to have the information.
I, I think you should have the information, it's not, it, I, I don't think it's hard to get.
So actually, you, you can, right now, you either borrow a truck from Uber, if you need it, or you rent, you can, there's an option to rent a truck for five thousand a month or something like that. That's the option.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for that, I just was.
No, I, I understand.
Come up a million times.
The other um the other thing is, how often do these trucks become available?
Well, if we were to go out and purchase, you know, just go out and purchase one, have it built for us, it's fifteen months. This happens to be one that's already been ordered by um the, the vendor or whatever, it's Taylor and Lloyd, um, so they're gonna have that as one of their, you know, yard trucks that they'll have to sell off the lot, so.
And it has what you want on it?
Has what we need on it. You know, it's bare bones, it's what, you know, but, you know, that's what we'd be buying anyways, right, yeah.
It'd be what we would be having them, it'd be what we'd be purchasing, right, or is that, did I hear that correctly?
Say that again?
You said it's bare bones, is it what we need, like, is it what we would be purchasing?
Yeah, it has everything we need on it, it has everything, some people may want, you know, some more bells and whistles, but, you know, it's not necessary.
What would the bells and whistles be, I mean, um.
You know, bucket seats versus, you know, bench seating, air suspension, stuff like that, I mean, this, there's a ton of different options that, you know, you can get, um.
But the primary use, as a bucket truck, to do tree trimming is what we need.
It's more luxury issues, you know, options or whatever, so this is, this is the basic model that they'd have off their lot.
When is um capital planning meeting?
So the capital cycle will start in July this year, and then the earliest, if, if it got, you know, went through the capital cycle, the earliest would be fall town meeting.
Right, right.
So then if we'd have to put a purchase in, purchase order in on something that's not already in line, it'd be like fifteen months from the time we purchase.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking that we could, you know, i- if we did um put it in the capital queue, prioritize it, go in the fall, um, but, you know, if we, if we did look at, you know, ARPA or you know, other, other resources to make the, um, the purchase now, if it's available, um, or, or, or rent or lease, you know, in the meantime, and then look at the, you know, the, the best truck that we would need to put in the capital queue to prioritize for next year if we, I, I don't know, um, but having some options.
How long has it taken for that vacuum truck that we put in the capital queue to come in?
I don't know when it was purchased, so it was purchased before I was here, um.
I think it went through at fall, fall twenty, twenty-two, town meeting was.
Do we have a delivery date?
I don't have a delivery date on it yet, no. I don't, it hasn't even come off the uh, the line yet, so, for the cabin chassis.
Well, just make sure that that uh, that worker's not driving it on steroid drive when we get it, so.
What's the purpose of holding out the cabin chassis, like, is there, we're gonna repurpose that into a different truck with some other cost related to, like, is it roadworthy with it?
Oh, it's definitely roadworthy, it's in great shape, um, we're, we're, right now, we're thinking about either putting a sander on it, taking one of our older, much older, and more beat up trucks that we take off the road that we, instead of purchasing a new sander, we just swap that over onto this chassis. It's something we can do.
Is that something that's already in the capital queue, the?
It's something we'd be asking for, yes.
Oh, you would, okay, but you also.
That's a good short money, right?
Right.
It's three thousand bucks.
Four thousand bucks.
Yeah, it's really short, yeah.
But it, but it, but it may solve a problem of something that could be in the capital queue, you know.
Right, I mean, that truck doesn't just go by the wayside, we're gonna take it and make it into something else.
I'm thinking we could sell it to somebody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could. I don't know how much you're gonna get for it, but.
So how, how we got to this point was I ran into a couple DPW workers at INCO setting up, and we started talking, uh, and, you know, to me, this truck is as vital to our operations as a fire truck. Uh, we have a storm like we had the other night, uh, I'm sure you got tree calls on Friday night.
Yeah, we got some, yeah.
Um, you know, we have the ability to respond immediately to remove a truck, I mean, remove a tree from, you know, a blocked road or someone's house or something like that. Right now, you know, if we rent or if we have to borrow a truck, you know, it's not guaranteed we're gonna have that response time. And to me, that's really problematic. Uh, so that's why, you know, if there's a truck available, and it won't be available for long, uh, is my understanding, is we have to act fast. Or we, you know, we find alternatives for the next, you know, several months while it goes to the capital queue and spins through fall town meeting, and then we gotta order for fifteen months, so then, you know, essentially we're paying double for the truck, because the truck is gonna be the same price.
And we're gonna be incurring a cost to rent something to get our other needs met, in the meantime.
I felt it, you know, warranted being on our agenda, uh, given the opportunity that this truck was available. And, and I would fully support, you know, using this money right now to get this truck, because I think it's that important to this town.
Can I just pop, pop in another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I agree that, well, does it, does it have a warranty, is this included like a three-year warranty, a five-year warranty, or something like that if you buy it? Instead of warranty for a longer period of time for more money, if, if just, let's get it all out right now?
Yep, sixty months, hundred thousand miles, five years on the Allison transmission.
Nothing on the bridge hitting.
Right.
Zero.
That's including.
Do we have other trucks that um are too high to go under across?
We have a loader that's too high to go underneath it, we have a rubber tire excavator, um, but that doesn't go out anymore, so, yeah.
And the vector truck?
Vector, probably, yeah, yeah, I would assume so, yeah.
So, you know, outside of you just running into somebody at um INCFA, I mean, um, like, why would, why didn't this come to us before, I mean, it was, um.
We just got these numbers.
Right, I mean, I've been doing my due diligence.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, just more of the issue.
There was no truck available until, it so happened around that time, ti- same time period, a truck became available.
So we've been getting estimates for, hope, we were hoping to just be able to replace the boom on it, um, but those numbers came in so high, it just wasn't, there was no value in it.
Yeah.
Um, so then we started looking for cost of trucks, so I mean, we're gonna go down the path of capital.
Right.
So we're just doing all, uh, our due diligence for it, uh, we've contacted tree companies to cover for emergencies and stuff, and so, I mean.
So what are we doing in the meantime?
We're spending money on tree companies.
Right, right, we, we have a tree company coming, we just put out a bid, um, with a bunch of trees that need work done, um, so the prices range from ten thousand to, I think the highest was seventeen, so we're spending ten thousand to take down a bunch of trees.
So if we get this truck faster, we're not spending that money, we're gonna have to replace the truck eventually.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
So. Right now, we don't have the ability to respond to an emergency. Well, I mean, we do, but we don't have the proper equipment. Just happens when you have one of these types of pieces of equipment.
And so are most of our, our calls for the truck are those mostly, you know, emergency removing trees that?
For a lot of dead limbs, you know, uh, trimming back trees, um, limbs that have fallen on sidewalks or, or whatnot, dead trees coming down.
Right.
So.
So, I mean, I'd like us to see us fund it, but I'm just wondering.
Are we thinking free cash?
What? No.
ARPA.
ARPA. We can't do free cash without town meeting approval.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we use.
That's true.
I think if we use, you know, ARPA, I mean, I think that we should look at um the stabilization, I mean, that, I thought last we had a discussion about there was money in the stabilization fund anyways, did we spend that?
Stabilization, what stabilization fund?
In the um the capital stabilization fund, wasn't there um unspent proceeds from, that were approved from this prior year?
Um, we reallocated any of that at, back in town meeting.
Yeah, and that was, was, okay.
And then town meeting approved the four hundred thousand.
The four hundred thousand, right, so that's.
Coming out of capital.
Right, right.
Town meeting.
That was my question, if that was still there, but, you know, I guess my question is if, um, if we funded by ARPA, then how do we get the money back from the stabilization fund at fall town meeting or, um, you know, what's the strategy?
Like, if we didn't have.
Right, that's my question, if we didn't have ARPA.
ARPA.
Right.
What, how, what would?
Recap a reserve fund, right?
What would we do?
If we didn't have ARPA, it would be a capital request, and it would.
And it, we would have to wait.
Go through the cycle, right?
Wait through the whole process.
But I think the reserve fund transfer is, is through finance committee is probably.
So I'm, I'm not sure we can do that, given the timing, right, I don't know when we'd have to.
September is when it's supposed to be in?
So, you know, the book's closed for twenty-three, June thirtieth, um, which I don't know if that timing would work out in terms of us committing those funds before the end of the fiscal year. I don't know, we, do we put a deposit down, or I don't know how that works.
Um, if you get, if, if I get the approval to put a, a letter of intent to them, then they'll hold it for us.
But do they, would they, like, if, if you got a reserve fund transfer, that money would have to be spent by June thirtieth?
It has to spend in this fiscal year.
Or if we get a reserve fund transfer in July.
So, yeah, no, I mean, I.
Right, but I don't think we wanna take, they're, they're gonna have, they're gonna have four hundred thousand dollars as of July one, I don't think we wanna take two hundred thousand of it.
Well, there's, there's always this fall town meeting article to put money back in, to make them whole, I'm just saying, if we didn't have ARPA.
Yeah.
And I realize we can't do free cash, true, real free cash, but like, reserve fund functions as free cash in emergencies, that's what it functions as. And I'm fine with ARPA, but I think we just need to be thoughtful that if we didn't have it, we'd be doing something else somehow to not go through the capital planning fifteen months to wait process. So, I'm, I'm fine with ARPA, but if it was a reserve fund and we took out two hundred grand in July, put a letter of intent in June, please hold the truck, we'll pay you in September whenever it's due, fall town meeting would put that money back in from reversions or whatever we would do. Or we could ask capital stabilization to pay. Yep. I have faith in people's ability to sell that need to finance committee, but, no, I'm fine with us using ARPA. But at some point, that money's gone, and we still, we, we'll still have emergencies like this, and ideally, we don't wanna have to have everything go through capital.
Well, we, we wanna be strategic about, you know, our use of ARPA, I mean, that's what communities are doing, and that's what we committed to, and so, um, it is a, um, once in a lifetime opportunity for us to have this money that, um, we have flexibility for, and, um, this is something that's kind of, you know, right down the middle of the plate for, for capital. Um, you know, of course, we have to um buy this uh truck now, right, I mean, if there's one available and, you know, we can't wait, and it doesn't make financial sense, and if we get numbers on leasing, it doesn't work, um, but, you know, we, we should have information to help us make the decision on the leasing and all that. I don't mind, um, voting, uh, to issue a letter of intent on purchase, and then having us, um, if they're, if they hold it for us, they know we're good for the money, and then we have, then we figure out the money, um, between now and our next meeting.
What if they require a deposit to do that?
Yeah, they won't, just similar to the, the um loader that we just purchased, the street sweeper, they don't, they don't ask for.
When do you have to issue the PO?
I just need the letter of intent to them, that's it, they'll hold the truck for.
Just post a tech check to July second, so it'll come out of next year, but.
So how are we funding this?
So it's, it sounds like uh, well, it sounds like we wanna use ARPA, I'm a little confused on why we would want, I, I, I mean, can get information on leasing, but what we know from capital at town meeting in the fall was the truck went up eighty thousand dollars, whatever it was, so if we're gonna lease something and it's for three years, three years from now, we're gonna have to purchase a truck unless we're looking for some windfall to, to do so, it's probably gonna be a lot more than what two hundred thirty thousand dollars that we're looking at.
Yeah, it's just prioritization of resources, I mean, everything that we don't fund this year, um, and what we, if we spend two hundred thousand dollars on, on this from ARPA, we're not spending on something else, so that next thing is gonna go up, I mean, so, we always have the issue of cost, you know, escalation for um, really all of these, these projects, so, um, certainly, again, as I said, I'm, I'm happy to, um, you know, vote to issue a letter of intent um, to, to purchase this, I think we're all in agreement that, um, this is available, and we have to strike while the iron is hot, and this problem is not going away, and, uh, but the, the conversation is, um, it should be in the capital queue, or it could be, um, a reserve fund transfer, um, and it seems like.
I don't know how we're going to the capital queue.
Yeah, I don't think we can issue, we can't issue a note of intent if we're, if we're gonna have it go through capital, cause it's gonna be delivered in September, and we need the money before fall town.
And I think, you know, I think you're gonna find that when we claw back some of this money from projects that are finished, and the health department, we're gonna have, you know, enough money to buy, pay for this truck. In addition to, you know, the money that we haven't, you know, that we really haven't, that we thought we would have to allocate for other uses we haven't had to do, so. I mean, you know, yes, I get your point about, you know, what do we do in the future when this stuff happens, you know? We're extremely lucky that this happened when it did, and we have this available to us, or we'd really be in, in trouble, and if you talk about, you know, a community you know, effort, uh, you know, community asset, this is it, I mean, you're, you got a tree that falls, they're coming, you know, and I think that's, you know, when, as a citizen, that's what you, you want from your town, like, when you're in a crisis, they respond, and they have the equipment to respond, so.
So tonight, are we just authorizing Bob slash Beth to do a letter of intent that we want to lock down that product, that, that equipment at that price? And we will, we have to pay for it in August, September?
When the truck is delivered, yes, so September.
But do we have to issue a PO before then?
Yeah, once, if, if, if you approve it tonight, I mean, we could just issue the PO and just skip the letter of intent.
So we need a funding source to do that, we can't issue a PO without a funding source.
We do the letter of intent because, like, if, on, on the capital, it's not available to July first. So, so I can't even do a PO because the money's not available, so I can't write a PO.
Well, you could, if it's ARPA money.
I could if it's ARPA money, correct, I was just saying if it's capital, I can't, that's why.
You have a dedicated fund, I mean, you issued the letter of intent because you know that springtime meeting voted the funding, and it's gonna be available July first, so you have a dedicated funding source.
Correct. That's why I have a letter of intent.
So the easiest thing to do is to issue, have a motion that we use a hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy cents for of ARPA money to purchase this truck, that's the easiest thing to do, and if you wanna take it a step further or do something different, we can do it.
Um, but this is the problem, is I think that we, it, we use ARPA, and we just say this is always the easiest thing to do, because it's, it's easy for just the five of us to make that decision on something that's priority, but we're.
In an emergency, yes.
Okay, um, I, I, as I said, I, I think we're going to purchase this vehicle in September, no matter what, now, whether it, the money comes from um, free cash and reserve fund transfer, um, you know, whether, um, it's reimbursed, you know, through the capital process at some point, um, you know, I, it's, um.
I, I don't see how we can do it through the capital process, you keep saying that, and I just, from what I understand, the capital process, it can't be reimbursed, like, you know, to purchase this in September. The proper process goes on far too long to do that, it either has to be a reserve fund transfer or ARPA, and my understanding right now, you know, is that, you know, you know, if we don't get something in soon, we, you know, we, we risk losing the truck, and they don't come around very often. That's why this is kind of, you know, in the last week, taking on a life zone, they had to find the truck, right, I mean, you didn't, you didn't have a truck.
I, I think we all get the urgency about the truck, and, you know, but I think it's fair for us to ask questions when we see something just pop up, and this is my issue with ARPA, is that every meeting, w- we come in with just a one-off, you know.
I get it, but there's sometimes there's an emergency.
I, I know, Rich, and we're not gonna have it the next time for the emergency if we spend it on things where we have other opportunities for funding sources. This is exactly what the re- reserve fund, um, is there for, um, for FinCom, and I, I think that it, it, it should be increased because things come up this, this way, things cost more money, um, so, um, it's, um, uh, there, there's a lot of other opportunities for us, um strategically with ARPA funds, and, uh, but, um, so I, I would issue the letter of intent, come back here and, you know, a, um at our meeting in a couple weeks, um, and see if there are, are options, we may talk to the finance committee, and they, they may not have any interest in this. And they may say, what they usually say is, use ARPA, you know, so, um, you know, it, that, that may be it, but I think it's fair for us to go through um, the normal process of what we would do is, if, you know, ARPA wasn't there.
Anyone feel differently?
I'm, I'm fine with funding this from ARPA, but I'd, I'd ask, like, this has been out there long enough that when getting these things at the last minute, it just drives me insane, because you really can't contemplate it, you're here, and you give fifteen minutes, you gotta make a decision, you really don't have all the information. So I find this an unacceptable work product. And I'll tell you, if I get an O E S, I'm just gonna say no, I don't care what it is, town can burn down, we need a fire truck, ambulance, it, it's irrelevant to me, because there should be some thoughtful analysis on, here are the three different options we examined, I, I'm all for, I understand the need to purchase it now. And I won't part, partificate in this, but I just have higher expectations.
I I'm all for, I understand the need to purchase it now, and I won't pontificate in this, but I just have higher expectations of what we can do. And I'm I'm, and I'm sensitive to how much work staff has, just saying, just 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 give us a two-page document that says here are the options we considered, and here's a recommendation, that's it. The general thinks too much to ask. That's all, that's all I'm asking for.
It's not too much asked, John, but you have to understand, there are certain pieces that come into play at the last second. This truck just became available, I think, on Thursday.
Okay.
So, you know, they had to put it all together, so it's, you know, it's there, and and if we if we waited a day or two, it's like, have you bought a car recently? How hard is it to buy a car?
I have.
Yeah.
And, uh so I I'm I'm quite, my only point is, like, but we should be able to call our finance guy, and just could get the, it's a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. What's the call cost to lease it, and it's gonna be seventy thousand dollars a year, whatever it is, that's fine, that that goes down here, um.
So I'm gonna represent to you that I had that conversation with the assistant town manager today, and say we never lease vehicles, because it's, as Beth said, it's, it 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 doesn't, we don't make out in the deal, we can only lease for three years, and we burned through it, so.
But that's, Rich, just saying that you talked to Mark, and Mark said, no, we never lease, I mean, w- we need information, I mean, we can't just come here and get, you know, these eleventh hour requests for a lot of money when we normally have a process for it, so I guess my point is the same as John's, uh you know, we keep getting in these situations where everything is the biggest emergency every week, and we, it just just came in, what, Friday or over the weekend, so.
Mike, you you like to talk of generalities, so I just wanna correct you, what was the last emergency that we came in with on an ARPA request?
We come in with.
No, no, give me an example, just give me an example.
Rich, I don't remember, every single one of these ARPA requests come in, you know, um individually, right? So every meeting, it's, let's approve this, and maybe it's thirteen thousand dollars, maybe it's fifty, maybe it's two hundred. And I've said this at every meeting, it's, we we promised a process, we're evaluating the ARPA request that we sent out to the community um as a whole, so I just wanna, and if there's money coming back from other um projects, um great, but we need to evaluate that. Most communities, if if not all, um you know, I've even, you know, gone somewhere and uh on vacation and seen, you know, in Vermont, tiny, you know, uh town that has a hundred thousand dollars of of ARPA. Their ARPA committee is meeting on on how to rec- make a recommendation on that. We just um make our jobs easier by just using ARPA, and so it's not being strategic, so.
I disagree with you completely, it's being strategic because we have let the municipal side waste away three years. And you have, under your leadership, we have, and so we're trying to correct it. And so we have needs that need to be met, and we're trying to meet them. We have all these projects that we can do, and we are trying to look at them holistically, that's why Beth gave an update, we haven't touched ARPA in weeks. But there's certain emergencies that arise, and we get creative on how we fund it. I wish we budgeted differently in this town, but we don't, we don't have a large reserve account. We don't, you know, we don't stack budgets where we can, you know, absorb a loss like this, so, you know, we don't have redundancy, we have one truck. We've had one truck for twenty years, so.
Rich, Rich, let me, let me just.
We need, we 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 do the best we can, and this is an emergency, so.
Okay, so, so just de-escalate the situation here for a second.
Sure, go ahead.
I I I'm gonna, I am gonna respond to that, John, because I think it's it's ridiculous that that Rich has said that we've underfunded under, on my watch, do you know how much we've spent, have you looked at how much we've spent on capital in the last ten years? No community that is comparable to us has spent anything close to that, Rich. So we've been investing, we can't do it all overnight, you came in and you, and ARPA's been there, it's a lot to get money.
Give me the statistics, you make these general statements, send me that.
Take a look, I will send it to you right now.
That's because we spent three hundred million dollars on schools.
Yeah, no, it's not, we we do flood mitigation projects, we do fields, we do, we we do everything, we do a lot of projects in this town. We, there's no town that, as you say, clears the capital queue, we have a process for this. And so it, when we are building a hundred million dollar of school, and we are um increasing our our taxes every year by two and a half percent, yeah, we've gotta leverage, you know, some of um some of our assets, and we don't have commercial revenue, so that's why when we're looking at things like solar, that reducing our operating budget is is helpful to us, and it helps us invest in capital, so um I don't know what town you're looking at that doesn't spend money on on capital, but it's not Winchester, we spend a ton, and we have been, and but we have a process, we can't do it overnight, so, again, I'm happy to support this, um but it's, uh at some point, we need to uh really get back to business and uh and and be strategic, and not just um float these things around because, you know, um Mark pushed it across your desk on Friday.
He didn't push it across my desk, I told you how this came to be, I ran into the guy that drives the truck, and I said, I'm sorry to hear about your truck.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I I think, number one, don't personalize it for Mike, I think that's not appropriate, and the fact you ran to the guy in ENCA, which was May fourteen, right, May twenty, May fourteenth. Does the accident happen on April seventh, you found it about on May twelfth-ish, and we're getting something on June.
I think it was May twentieth.
Fifth. So even knowing that it was coming, I think would be helpful, even knowing that there's a truck, and we're looking at replacing the boom, or we're looking at leasing, even knowing it was coming would have been helpful, I'm gonna be fine with however we do it, but it lands like like it did for John and I walking in here tonight, I'm sure the the other two of us too, like, what the heck, so, it is what it is.
Do it, you guys don't wanna do it, it's fine. Then we won't, we won't have a truck.
It's it's knowing earlier that it's an issue and that it's coming, so it doesn't feel like an emergency tonight. So, we will fund it, and we'll approve it, and it'll get bought, no one, I don't think anyone's saying we're not gonna buy the truck.
Everyone said we are.
Yeah.
So I I think the the challenge is, I I mean, this truck became available on Thursday and Friday, so we could've got a heads up tonight and talked about it in three weeks. Um, if the question is, do we wanna get a heads up when there's equipment things at DPW, then that's a different conversation, do we need to know about those things? Should we have in a packet, I mean, is there a process for informing us on there was an incident with the truck in April? That's a different issue then, are we being asked on Monday to fund something that came through on Friday?
True.
I agree.
So, it it, as we talk about funding, if ARPA makes a lot of sense to use it, because it's gives us immense amount of flexibility to do something where there's a short turnaround to make a decision on this, and if we don't do it, we're waiting, you know, we're patching together, we're waiting an excessive amount of time. Um, you know, looking, we haven't allocated anything to ARPA since March twenty-seventh. There's been suggestions of some things that we spend ARPA here, spend ARPA there, um and I think, you know, this is a good place to spend it, and Michelle, I think from what you're saying, if we were to go through the process right now, to go to FinCom, uh, you know, very highly likely, they would turn right about, break back around and ask us to use ARPA, because that was, that's been their suggestions um since we started talking about the budget in January. I don't, I don't see that they would have changed their minds on that, so, I mean, it's either we wait three weeks and we talk about this at our next meeting and make the same decision, or we can just kinda do it now, determine we're gonna use ARPA to fund this, and figure out if we need to get a better sense of when things happen, what's the process for us to be aware, or what's the escalation, and at what point is it something that we need to be made aware of? And those are two different things. I've been talking about it for a better part of the hour, for thirty-five, forty minutes.
Festivus, I love it.
So, I'm happy to make a motion and move on to the next thing.
Sounds good, get it going.
So I move that be um authorize the use of ARPA funds to um purchase the um bucket truck for one hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy cents.
I think um Stacy's request is that we vote it up to, so that if there is a, if it comes in below that, then we don't have to revoke the difference.
So authorize the use of ARPA funds up to one hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy cents for the purchase of the bucket truck.
Oh, sorry, second, I'm sorry.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, I appreciate your your vote, um I apologize if this created any. But thank you.
All right, it's ten forty, I don't think we can do goals tonight.
We're not gonna do it.
Agreed.
So we just need to go back and to consent agenda and donations.
Start with donations.
Yep.
Um, and we accept with gratitude donations of five hundred and fifty dollars for the appreciation of transportation services, and six hundred thirty-five dollars for meetup Monday's socialization and volunteer appreciation to the Council on Aging.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move we accept with gratitude a donation of three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Family Action Network to the Recreation Department for the concerts on the common.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Move we uh approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 And I move we approve the supplemental consent agenda as posted for Monday, June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's everything for tonight. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Somebody, somebody second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ENCAM, good night. Thanks, everyone.